Okay. Counselor, would you read us out of closed session, please?
Yes. I move that the city council members certified by recorded vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Um, yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I call our regular meeting to order. A moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker?
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Here.
Counselor Hill?
I'm here.
Counselor Payne? Counselor Payne? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Here? Okay.
Counselor Snob?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have agenda approval. Is there a motion? And I have an amendment.
The amendment, I move to approve the agenda.
Second. I don't know what the amendment is, but...
Yeah, well, I have three. I would like to amend the agenda to, again, as I brought up last time, to discuss the firing of Chief Brackney, so that's one. The second one is discuss the hiring process for a new police chief. And the third one is to discuss the letter that we received about the PCR being chair.
Are we going to discuss it under other business because they weren't noticed, or...
In the past, we've amended the agenda and they came under other items. I mean, they came in order of the next item.
To amending to discussing the process for hiring the next chief and in particular interested in what we can do to guarantee, both in that process with future of the department, that reforms are continued.
I support that.
I would support. I would as well. I, uh, let me say, I, I've said before that my concern is about discussing an open meeting, uh, the, the firing of Chief Brackney because of uncertainty about both where the discussion would lead and exactly what the parameters are. Uh, I still feel that i- if we're going to get into that at some point, I would like to have it be with some greater degree of preparation. And some, uh, some having had a chance to talk a little bit with Lisa Robertson about, about what the proper parameters are. I have sort of this... The, the chair of the, uh, the PCR B, but other, but it's a different concern. And that has to do, I mean, I, it, it's not a personnel matter in the same sense confidentiality applies, but simply that I really am apprehensive about having discussions of these kinds of things, uh, frankly, on the fly without being aware that I was going to have to put my notes together and that kind of thing. So anyway, I, I would happily join in, uh, the discussion of the process for replacing, uh, Chief Brackney. And if we want to say we're going to discuss the issue with Mr. Brown at the next meeting so that we can have a chance to have, have thought about it, uh, I'm fine with that as well. I just don't think it ought, as a matter of fairness to the other counselors, ought to be sprung on us at this point.
All right, there was a daily progress opinion commentary piece written by the city manager about, um, the police chief, so I'm confused. I'll just state that about why we can't discuss it publicly.
It's not, it's not that we can't, because I think the city attorney has said we are permitted to. There are pieces of it that I think, um, are, are more complex than just us talking about the, the one decision. Um, and I, I said that last week, I still think, or two weeks ago, I still think it's, it's the case that it's a, a broader discussion. That because it's not really our decision to, to have made, um, it doesn't fall within the, the, the category of things. Actually, I guess what, what Ms. Robertson said was, it's not something we could have in a, we could discuss in a closed session. I guess really that's what she was saying. Never mind.
Okay. So any, so right now, there's only agreement, a second to amend the motion to discuss the hiring process for a new chief.
I think, yes. That's correct.
When I'd be, I'd be more open to, to, because I think, you know, the issue of the chief police is something which has been, there's obviously been public discussion and should be discussed at a meeting. I would be more comfortable just if it was at the next meeting or something like that, just to have a little more notice in terms of what the parameters will be in terms of personnel matters. But certainly at a minimum, I think it's, it's true that there ought to be a, a, a public discussion and some response from city leadership about some of the specific questions that were asked last meeting, to the extent they can be openly discussed as personnel matters.
And I would agree with that also. If we want to put both of those other items on the agenda, uh, for next meeting, that's great. I just, I get apprehensive about getting into matters of some sensitivity without having noticed that they were coming. I don't have my notes here at home, for example.
So we, and I'll move on, but we should have known that it was coming since September 1st, and we discussed it at the last council meeting. And then hopefully, the questions that I asked at the last council meeting are answered thoroughly today. And by the time those are answered, maybe we would be ready to have a discussion.
I just think that...
Okay. That's fine. So the, um, Ms. Thomas, do you have the, um, you have the amendment that we're voting on, just the hiring, hiring process for new chief?
So we'll vote on the amendment and then vote on the agenda.
Right.
So the amendment is a motion by Mayor Walker, second by Counselor Payne. Um, Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snob?
Yes.
And on the full agenda as amended, Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snob?
Yes.
Can I actually change mine to a no because I don't agree with not adding the additional two amendments? So I just want to be on record for that. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have announcements, and we'll start with, um, the updates from the Health Department.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on COVID-19. My name is Ryan McKay. I'm stepping in for Dr. Bonds. I'm the Director of Policy Planning and COVID Operations, and I'm going to share my screen here. And are you able to see the slide?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. So to begin, I'll just provide a little overview of where we are in terms of our current cases. I'll have a brief discussion on how Delta is driving the current surge, um, review where we are with the vaccination campaign, uh, including outreach efforts and mobile vaccinations, discuss testing, and then sort of the challenges we're facing moving forward. Here, we can see, uh, a little bit of a comparison between what's happening at the state level and then also with the city of Charlottesville. I have, uh, uh, numbers circled in red that represent the case incidence, um, seven-day average per 100,000. This sort of equalizes across populations so that we can make a bit of a comparison between what's happening, uh, either in localities or, uh, against the state level in this case. So as you can see, uh, here in Charlottesville, we're slightly higher than the state incidence rate, um, so we're at 44.2. Uh, our current positivity rate in Charlottesville is 3.4. And those numbers, um, that number being lower and then the case incidence being higher may seem confusing. What that means is that there's an extensive amount of testing that's occurring here, um, potentially related to what the university is doing, um, for students, faculty, and staff. A little bit of a comparison to where we were in February during the peak of the surge at that time and where we are now. You can see on the screen here, we have a peak, the single day case count of 59. Our highest case count during the week of February 14th was 107. And at that point, we were averaging about 58 cases per day. So we're considerably lower than where we were before. Not that that, uh, takes away from the current situation. Delta is a very serious variant. It's one that's, um, proving to be very transmissible and something that's forced us to make some changes with our prioritization, given the number of cases we're receiving and then also the number of close contacts. So we are prioritizing certain groups for investigation, particularly those who are unable to get vaccinated at this point. That would be pre-K through, uh, 11-year-olds, but then also really focusing on schools in general to make sure that we can identify cases, notify individuals, and really prevent outbreaks or clusters from occurring. We're also working on, um, situations where individuals may be in, um, either greater risk of exposure or may expose large numbers of other individuals in group settings, um, congregate care settings, for example. And so that prioritization process, um, tries to, tries, uh, to really get to the individuals who are at greatest risk and where we're hopeful to, um, reduce some of that, that risk through spread. Uh, we make a single phone call to individuals, both on the contact, uh, case side and then in close contact, um, and then provide some information about where individuals can go beyond that so that we can move to the next case. Opportunities for follow-up are difficult at this point, um, as we're trying to get through as many of the cases as we can within the prescribed timeframes from VDH. So for a case, it's 24 hours, and then close contacts is 48. And in some instances, we are not able to meet those prescribed timeframes. Just a little review of where we are with Delta, because it really is, um, the driving force here. Delta is far more contagious than what we've experienced already with coronavirus, uh, and even the common cold. As you can see here on the slides, it's about five times more contagious than our seasonal flu strains. So it spreads much more quickly than we've seen in the past. Those who are fully vaccinated cannot only get sick with COVID, but they can also transmit the disease where in previous strains or with COVID prior to this, fully vaccinated individuals weren't necessarily transmitting the disease. All that to say is we're seeing much more transmission in our community right now, uh, even though we have some decent vaccination rates, um, in the Health District and in Charlottesville specifically. A little bit more about what's changed. Dr. Bonds, I believe, showed a similar slide, uh, back in August. Uh, this sort of extends things out to where we currently are. And then on this slide, there's also a red circle, uh, back in that area of around July 1 or June 30th. So lots changed. As the Delta virus emerged, not only is it a highly transmissible, transmissible disease, we also saw that a lot of the mandates that were in place from the executive orders of the governor expired. Mask mandates, uh, uh, number of individuals who could, um, be in social gatherings. So we're really moving into a new phase where we were opening up, but at the same time, opening up while we see the emergence of the Delta variant, which is creating situations like we're in now where we have to be in surge mode. We're seeing far more cases than we saw throughout the summer and late spring, and obviously much more in terms of close contacts. Do want to provide a little bit of background and context around, um, where we are with cases by vaccination status, meaning those who are fully vaccinated, those who are partially vaccinated, and then obviously no vaccinated at all. What we've realized, you know, through data analysis over the last several months is that those individuals who are unvaccinated are going to develop COVID at a rate of about eight times that of fully vaccinated individuals and 2.4 times that of partially vaccinated people. And as you can see at the bottom, um, about 0.5% of those who are fully vaccinated in Virginia, so upwards of, uh, 4.8, 4.9 million individuals, 0.5% are testing positive with COVID. That's not to say we're capturing all of those, but the idea here is that the vaccine is working, um, even though individuals are getting COVIDed that are fully vaccinated. We also see that the risk of hospitalization and death are really low if you're fully vaccinated. So just a message here that we really need to focus on the vaccination campaign while we're trying to do our surge and testing, uh, for the community. It's really critical that, that this happened, um, and we're moving some efforts around, um, to make sure that we're providing greater access. So how are we doing? On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see vaccination, uh, by age group, and this is fully vaccinated. We do recognize that the 18 to 24-year-old group, uh, is the lowest by far. Traditionally, it's a hard-to-reach category, um, or age group in terms of vaccinations and, and health strategies. Some of the things that we've been working on, um, include our outreach efforts or vaccinating where people are. Um, so over the summer, we were at Tonsler Park on every Sunday, um, while there were, um, basketball tournaments happening, working, uh, with the community to provide that information through pastors, through local DJs. And the Virginia Department of Health has recently implemented, uh, a social media ad campaign, um, really directed at this particular age group, um, to pro, to try to convince this, this group, uh, to go ahead and get vaccinated. As far as comparisons to the rest of the state, Charlottesville has, is one of a small handful of localities in Virginia that's above 60.1%, um, with one dose. And obviously, that means we have a larger percentage of the population that's fully vaccinated. It's fluctuated anywhere from top 10 to top 15. Um, we realize that our efforts are not over, um, particularly with that 18 to 24 range. But the more people we can get vaccinated and having this percentage vaccinated reduces the likelihood of a continued surge. Little bit more information on where we are within our census tracts. Again, Dr. Bonds shared a similar slide, um, the last time we were, uh, she was presenting. You can see here, uh, percentage of individuals, adults with at least one dose of the vaccine by census tract, um, anywhere from the low to upper 60% range, uh, for these particular census tracts. Again, we're seeing success on the first dose. We're working to get people fully vaccinated, and obviously, the more people we get vaccinated, the more we can reduce spread and transmission. These two particular census tracts do include, uh, larger proportion or number of students. We do know that UVA mandated vaccines for all of the students returning to grounds. What we don't necessarily capture is those individuals' home addresses. And so while those students may be there and fully vaccinated, they're indicating that their home address is outside of our district or outside of these areas. We have been, um, on Grady Ave for the last several weeks to, um, provide access to the vaccine. We saw an initial, um, success with those, anywhere from 15 to 20 individuals getting vaccinated. We're seeing a decline over the last week or so. We will be at Grady again, um, Wednesday evening, uh, and so we're looking how we can, um, move our mobile unit around to provide access in other areas of the community, um, to try to increase those numbers. Just a refresher on where we've been, what we've been doing for community outreach. Talithia, uh, was on last time to provide some information about that. We continue our efforts with mobile operations, pop-up events, uh, throughout the Charlottesville area and into the Health District. Uh, again, some of the numbers may not be huge, 15 to 20 doesn't sound like a lot, but when we're in a really difficult time of getting people over, um, being hesitant for the vaccine, those are really critical numbers, um, and important for providing some protection to those that are getting it. We've expanded some stuff with Moby on the mall, so we're there from 12 to 3 on Mondays now. We've had tremendous success, anywhere from 20 to 25 individuals vaccinated per visit, um, which is a huge lift to the community. Uh, a number of those individuals have a connection with the Haven, so we're reaching populations that may not otherwise be vaccinated or have access to the vaccine. Number of community partners continue to ask for our presence to provide access to the vaccine. Uh, and as of late, we've been working with schools on, um, attending football games, uh, to provide access there as well. Hopefully, any parents who maybe were unvaccinated or, um, getting their older children vaccinated while we're on site. Events will continue throughout the fall, um, as we try to, um, really increase, uh, that percentage of fully vaccinated. We still have our homebound partnership with UVA, so when we identify the individuals who really need that access at, at their home, we, um, communicate that, uh, to UVA and with Charlottesville Fire Department to make sure we can provide that access. So on Friday, the FDA met with their advisory committee to get information and recommendations on how to move forward with boosters. This has been a huge topic of conversation at the federal level. We were given a little bit of direction on where things might lead to, but I think it's important to understand and recognize that the FDA has not made any official announcements yet or approvals. CDC will meet with their advisory committee on Wednesday and Thursday, so we anticipate something more official later this week or early next week. The current recommendation, um, for review is 60 boosters for individuals 65 and above and those who are at greater risk, either for severe outcomes or potentially even just risk of exposure. Uh, we'll need more definition on that as, as the decision is made before we can provide specific plans and how we're going to provide access. Right now, we're, we're looking at a couple of different options. We do know, based on some recent, uh, surveys that we've conducted over the phone, our planning projection is 80% of those who are fully vaccinated and eligible would receive, would want, uh, the booster shot, um, when it's made available to them. And so to do that, we're looking through a possible, uh, drive-through at the old Kmart location where we were previously. Uh, we have been in discussions with the Virginia Department of Health about hosting a community vaccination center that would bring in an outside vendor, um, to offer vaccine to that particular group. We will increase hours and staffing at the J.Crew location, and we'll continue to offer vaccinations here at the Health Department. Five to 11-year-olds. This was announced today that Pfizer has provided some data and research on efficacy related to the stage group. We've been anticipating something between October and December. Obviously, that timeline is very big and makes it challenging for planning. We are working directly with schools who could serve as hubs on, uh, on evenings or on weekends for parents to bring their children to vaccinate. Also, we'll work with our local pediatricians to bolster up their capacity, either with providing them the vaccine or supporting their own vaccination efforts, um, location. COVID testing, we've seen testing demands, um, skyrocket over the last few weeks as, uh, schools have either required testing for return or individuals are seeking it because they've been potentially exposed or are symptomatic. Our numbers are pretty significant. We're doing what we can to meet demand, but we know that even with our community partners and our own testing efforts, it may not be sufficient at this point. So we are working on hiring additional staff, um, bringing on more nurses to provide access to testing, um, so that hopefully we can continue to bolster our capacity and meet any additional demands that may be in place. Testing events occur Monday to Friday, um, throughout the Charlottesville area. Here, you can see where UVA is doing testing on Mondays and Tuesdays, so at Church of Incarnation in Mount Zion First African Baptist Church. And then we have, uh, an outside vendor who's coming in on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and then we follow up on Fridays at Fashion Square Mall, um, in the parking area there. There are a number of other organizations that are doing testing. UVA Pediatrics has recently done a couple of pop-up events in the community with potential for more. Um, and then again, as we bring on more staff, we'll look to expand our access to testing as well. So our current challenges, um, again, there's no official approval for boosters. We're working on what that's going to look like if, if the recommendations that I described are approved. And we're also trying to figure out what that means when children 5 to 11 are eligible to receive the vaccine. Again, there's no set timeframe. Pfizer providing the data today may, may give us a little indication of when that may happen, but all of these are sort of up in the air at this point. We do have the pieces in place to, to provide access, but again, unknown as to when that might be. Potential for future surges, so on the right, you can see, this is, uh, surge model for, from the, uh, University of Virginia's Biocomplexity Institute. This has continually been pushed out, um, starting in September and now moving into October. Again, it makes it difficult to sort of understand when we would expect the peak and things to, to subside if those models change based on the current situation. We also have this sort of undefined end game from CDC and VDH. Boosters, vaccinating children 5 to 11, continue on work on case investigation, contact tracing. It's sort of hard to plan for the long term, what's going to happen at the beginning of the next calendar year, the next six months, the next 12 months. Um, and so while we have the staff currently in place, um, to respond to these operations, we don't know what that long-term capacity is going to look like. And so we're looking to VDH and CDC to provide a little bit more guidance, um, to make sure that we're appropriately planned to move forward. So some calls to action. Obviously, getting vaccinated is the most, uh, important way and thing we can do to end the pandemic. We are still asking people to mask. We want to make sure that schools are safe, that they're protected as much as possible. And so anything that we do in the community outside of a school setting actually supports schools in keeping people, um, children in classrooms. Not everybody is eligible for the vaccine, so again, we want to make sure that we're taking steps to protect those that can't get vaccinated at this point. And for more information, individuals can call our hotline. We had over 560 calls that we were able to answer last week. We know that there were many more calls than that, and so please be patient. You can also send us an email at brhdhealthdistrict@gmail.com. I may have to share that email, uh, address with you all, um, but that's another avenue for us to communicate with individuals in the community. And then if people are in, are searching for, uh, vaccination, vaccines.co backslash search. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mayor Walker and open up for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, um, for the presentation, counselors. Are there any questions? So... Do you have a... Thank you, you know, again, I just, um, want to highlight what you just highlighted about the word mask went out and about. I have, um, over the past, Chip, what has it been now, three, two, three weeks? Been in an email exchange with UVA, attempting to get, um, them to consider requiring masks outdoors and especially at events. And trying to, you know, base it on the premise that a lot of the individuals serving them are lower-income citizens, so, serving this, um, UVA community and their students are lower-income, um, citizens who, whether fully vaccinated or not, are going to potentially have more health challenges from what we're seeing, um, with this pandemic. So I just, you, you had it on the last slide of where masks went out and about, so I just want to say that. I also, not necessarily asking you to chime in, because I know it's the, you know, position, but for months now in council, I've been sending emails and about that as a locality, um, we need to put in place more restrictive, um, measures, again, um, based on the crises that we are in to just let our citizens know whether the state or federal government has jumped into, um, that yet. And I'm often met with the, let the experts make the decisions. And my response has been if the experts were making the decisions ba, based on health and safety, um, public safety standpoint and not, um, capitalism, then I think we all would be in a better place. So I just want to make that statement, um, publicly again. And my one question would be, um, I'd asked Dr. Bonds quite a few times about the effectiveness of one dose, and at that time, she would say one dose is better than nothing, you know, but I'm wondering now with, um, Delta and where we are, um, what are your thoughts about, um, citizens who only had one, um, dose of a vaccine?
Citizens who've only gotten one shot of Moderna and Pfizer, we would encourage them to get the second dose. You don't receive the full efficacy or benefit unless you have both doses. Johnson &amp; Johnson still provides, um, a tremendous amount of protection. I think the key here, tier is, it's, it's not just about, um, eliminating or minimizing the spread of disease. Fully vaccinated individuals, like the slide that I had shown, are far less likely, um, to have the worst outcomes, death, hospitalization. Even if you survive and you've been hospitalized, there are long-term effects of what could happen with COVID, not to mention the individual hardships that it brings potentially economically. Being fully vaccinated is essential to protecting yourself, um, and we would encourage everyone if they've only received one dose of Pfizer or Moderna to get that second dose so that they can get the full coverage that it offers.
And do we have any, um, data on one? And do we have any data on one? How many people who have been hospitalized have only received the one dose?
That's a question. There might be data available through VDH, but I don't know the exact answer to that. I do know the likelihood is that of getting COVID or to, what's the number, two point four times more likely to get COVID than those who are unvaccinated. So it does help, but I just don't know how much, especially related to hospitalizations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, well. Thank you for joining, and we appreciate it. My Dr. Bonds will be back next month, so I guess we won't see you, but thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. So the, are there any other announcements?
Mayor Walker, I have a quick announcement.
Okay.
September fifteenth through October fifteenth is Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. Just want to announce that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just want to just remind people again, we did it at the last, stated at the last council meeting, but today is the Fourth Annual Close Your Mouth and Listen Day presented by Mr. Alexander. There are activities that'll be that we're on starting at six thirty, and you can go to alexand.com today on Channel fourteen, and you can go to alexand.com for more information. He encourages all citizens to be still and quiet for one minute, to take a moment and listen and think before you act, to be mindful when speaking and choose words that are helpful, not hurtful. This stand beyond allow people to share their thoughts and feelings without any interruptions and ride to respect individual differences and expressions. And just close your mouth and listen. There, again, is more information on alexand, alex-zan.com, and you can email him at alexand@i-c.net. There's also a event at the Ting Pavilion on September thirtieth, the Legacy of Black Wall Street. It's the UVA Center for Politics and Partnership with Legacy Productions, sponsored by Red Light Management. And it's an evening of events surrounding the documentary by Deborah Draper that tracks the rise of Black Wall Street in Oklahoma up until the nineteen twenty-one Tulsa Race Massacre. Andrea Douglas will open the event with welcoming remarks, followed by a few COVID PSAs. There will be a conversation with Deborah Draper, family, family members of the T.C. Tuckstiki Study Victims and Caveout. And there will be food for purchased from a food truck and in bold and in red, masks are required. And hopefully, there's a lot of social distancing, physically distancing measures in place, too. Are there any other announcements? All right. Next up, we have boards and commissions appointments.
I move that Charlottesville City Council appoint the following to its boards and commissions. For Alamoore, Charlottesville Regional Jail Authority, Lisa Drain. The Charlottesville Alamoore Airport Commission, Brian Johnson and Matthew Murray. The Community Development Block Grant Task Force, Connor Brew. The John Board of Directors, Eric Larson. The Monticello Area Community Action Agency Board, Sarah Shelf. The Region Ten Services Board, Jacqueline Weber. And the Youth Council, Zanea Bryant and Christopher Pronsino.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Yes.
Counselor Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Payne.
Yes.
Counselor Snook.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Consent agenda, one minutes, August sixteenth, closed and regular meetings. Two, ordinance, amending and reenacting Charlottesville City Code, Chapter Nineteen, Section nineteen dash fifty-nine, to change the length and number of terms for members of the city's retirement commission, second reading. Three, resolution appropriating housing opportunities for people with AIDS, HIV, grant funds to the Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless, TJAC, two hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred seventy, one hundred seventy-two dollars, second reading. Resolution appropriating funds from the Thomas Jefferson Area Coalition for the Homeless to the Department of Human Services, ten thousand dollars, second reading. Five, resolution appropriating funds for the Virginia Behavioral Health Dogit Grant, forty-nine thousand dollars, second reading. Six, resolution appropriating funds for the Charlottesville Alamoore Adult Drug Treatment Court Grant Award, two hundred forty thousand dollars, second reading. Seven, resolution appropriating Fama Works Grant Funds for the Recruitment and Retention of Black, Indigenous and People of Color by PAC Foster Families, five thousand dollars, second reading. Eight, resolution appropriating VDOT Funds for VDOT Highway Safety Improvement Grant for Washington Park to Madison Avenue Trail, eighty-eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars, first of two readings. Nine, resolution appropriating funds for Virginia Department of Social Services Temporary Aid to Needy Families Grants, two hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, first of two readings. Ten, ordinance, amending and reenacting the transient occupancy tax of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, nineteen ninety, to conform the city's process for collection and reporting of transient occupancy tax with changes in state-enabling legislation, first of two readings. Eleven, ordinance, amending and reenacting the meals tax to clarify that meals tax reports are due from the sellers to the city every month, first of two readings.
All right, thank you. We'll turn it over to Mr. Willard to see if there are any comments on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. If you're in the audience and you'd like to address counsel on one of those eleven items that was on the consent agenda, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. This is not Community Matters, which will come in a few minutes, but if you want to speak to the consent agenda, this would be the time to raise your hand. We have two hands raised right now. The first is Mr. Jeff Fogel. Jeff, you're on with counsel. Go ahead.
I'd like to talk to you about the contribution that you're making for the specialized courts. I would like some of you to have the courage to stand up and say you believe that people should lose their Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Amendment rights in order to get help. Mr. Snook sent me an email saying, oh, I don't want to deprive them of the money. Mr. Snook, I had to remind him, who doesn't pay attention all the time, I have never asked you not to give the money. I have always said, make a principled point about this issue for which you are giving them. A single one of you or anybody else in this town has been able to explain to anybody why it's necessary to plead guilty in these specialized courts. The only third was again from Mr. Snook, who said twenty years ago, the prosecutors wanted something in return for letting these people, quote, off. Well, if you all are living twenty years ago in the criminal justice system, fine, but have the courage, please, to stand up and say, no, you're wrong, Jeff. It is the right thing to do to require people to plead guilty to get help. It is the right thing to do for people to be deprived of their Fourth Amendment rights. It's the right thing to do to deprive people of Fifth Amendment rights. It's the right thing to do to deprive people of their Sixth Amendment rights. And if you don't have the courage simply to respond to something that's simple, please leave the stage.
Our next speaker is Forrest Callen. Forrest, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Good evening, counsel. First of all, I wanted to say that we're deeply grateful for the time and attention you've given to us to explore the best way to provide emergency medical care to the citizens of Charlottesville. I'm basing talking to you again because we sent letters to Mr. Boils.
So this is just for items I just read on the consent agenda.
I understand. I'm wondering why the item that we submitted to all of you for the agenda didn't make it to the agenda regarding the need for an interagency counsel to look at EMS services.
Okay, this wouldn't be the time for that.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
We have one more hand raised. It's Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
So can you all hear me okay?
We can.
So I also agree with Jeff just on drug court. From personal family experiences that I've been through the program and knowing that there's not enough treatment-based services offered, I just, I I really find it really hard to believe, especially with people who are attorneys sitting up on council, that you think that that is absolutely okay when it's completely against people's rights, the way the program operates. I've had my own conversations with Joe about it. I know that it's a joint effort between the city and the county both, but something has to be done with the drug court program. You all keep funding it, but yet you are taking away their rights for somebody that clearly has an addiction issue. You telling them, sign this, but we gonna let you all sign this. But they're basically waiving their rights in order to get help for something you know that they've been battling with. Most of these people pretty much their entire life. And they're still not getting the proper help that they need, even after you've already made them relinquish their rights. It's absolutely crazy and absurd. And it mainly affects people of color, mainly. Throughout the year, my, my years of living, I've known tons of black people who have been through this program. And they've been, it's a revolving door for them. It has to be a different way. It has to be a better way. You can't just say you okay with 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 this. And a lot of you said you weren't before you got on council. But now that you're on council, it's a totally different story. Something got to give, seriously. Something got to give. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
You're second.
I'll second it.
All right. And further comments?
Yeah, just briefly about, you know, the drug court item, this is something I think like a year and a half we discussed how the comments turning on. And I guess my thought is still the same, that it seems our choice is to either fund it and have before us, fund it and have it not exist. Or fund it, continue to have it exist, not fund it, not have it to exist. And given that scenario, it seems like it's better than it exists than nothing existed. I would also agree it would be better if it didn't require pleas. And I'm happy for counsel at some point to explore, you know, stating that position or state it myself, but it's, everything I've heard to my knowledge, that is not something that we directly control or can choose to do or not do on our own, but I'm happy to state, I think ideally, like a few other areas. If you could do it without not, without pleas, it would be ideal. But again, it's not something that we directly control, and it still seems to be better to divert people from going into jail through this program existing than if it purely didn't exist, even though it would clearly be better without requiring pleas.
And I just, I'm reluctant to get into this when it's been something we've discussed many times before. But as Michael pointed out, the only choice before us is, actually, it's even a narrower choice in this case because on this consent agenda, all we are doing is sending on money, some of which is ours, most of which is not. We just happen to be the fiscal agents. Most of it is either from the state or from the county. We're putting it all together into this into this appropriation. But ultimately, the the choice that we have, since we don't have the power to amend the program, the only choice we have is, do we vote yes or do we vote no? And if we vote no, then I guess the program dies. And I think that would be a colossal mistake. I've got lots of clients who are extraordinarily grateful for having had the opportunity to go through the drug court program. For it's one, it has historically been the only way that you could avoid a felony drug prosecution, a felony drug conviction in in some of these cases where there's no question that you were possessing the stuff that was in your pocket. I will also say that every time that I've ever had a drug court eligible case that had a potential Fourth Amendment issue, I've I've never had a case where I told my client, plead guilty. You don't need to worry about the Fourth Amendment or the Fifth Amendment or the Sixth Amendment, just plead guilty and be done with it. The Commonwealth's attorney would give us the information ahead of time. We would make the evaluation of the issue and whether it was a good issue or a bad issue and let the council and let the candidate, let the client make the decision as to how they wanted to play it. That is not to say there would not have been some pressure. Of course, there was. But it ultimately would be a situation where the lawyer has the information, advises the client, advises the client as to whether to to go ahead and and waive an issue that might not be a very good issue anyway, and go ahead and take the program that allows allows the client to avoid the the felony conviction. It is not an easy decision. It is not a clear-cut decision in many cases. And there are plenty of arguments to be made on either side, and they were made twenty-plus years ago when the drug corp was founded. And we certainly, other folks other than Charlottesville City Council may well want to have that discussion. But it's not ultimately our decision, and it's not ultimately something that I want to endanger the entire program over. So that, I make that comment only because I was addressed personally in this regard.
Is Mayor Walker present?
I don't see her. Some, yeah.
She may have lost connection.
Did I continue the meeting then, or should we try to give her a few more minutes to see if she can regain connection?
I'm going to try to send a message. I don't know if one of you wants to try also.
Yeah, it'll take just wait a few minutes.
She did lose connection, so I think she sent you a text, Vice Mayor.
She's back.
All right. Sorry about that. That happened during our closed session, which is the first time my internet has ever done this, so my apologies. But I did call in, Mr. Willer, so I'll just do that again. And then whatever number pops up, if you could check in, you know, it's probably me. I'll just join that way, so it won't be a break. Did anyone, did you all wait or did we move on?
They just, they just, oh, sorry. I was gonna say, Michael and Lois spoke and we have not moved on from the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second, but no vote yet.
Ready for the vote?
And even when the new mental health docket started and the medication requirement, as early as that, I brought that concern up too, so. And had an invitation to join the Drug Court Board for a meeting. And then they said they would extend it when they were ready for me to meet about this very issue the last time we had an allocation before them. So I just wanted to share that. All right, any further comments? Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snook?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That carries five oh. Next up, we have the city manager response to the community matters and to councillors.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. And perhaps some of this will, will answer a few of the questions regarding the police situation. This past week, as you've all mentioned, I placed an op-ed in the Daily Progress to give perspective on where I am right now, having had time to consider the impact of the announcement made regarding the leadership of our police department. While standing firm on the decision I did make, the fact is I could have handled the decision quite differently. I could have and should have engaged counsel and my leadership team and more deliberating and on my intended actions so that I not only had their input, but also a broader perspective of the community's response. I can assure you that going forward, our new deputy city managers and the city council will be more engaged in all facets of leadership decision-making. The first step towards this is to answer the questions raised at the last city council meeting. Some because of personnel confidentiality I cannot answer today, but others I do have answers for. And others, staff is still working on collecting information that was asked for. First, there were two meetings held.
So, Mr. Boils, can you read each question that was asked and state whether you are deferring to a later date or whether staff is still working on it or that you can't because of personnel?
Yep. I don't have it written that way, but I think my answers, I do have some of the answers that say it will be coming at a later date. But I do think that'll be included in that. There were two meetings held with the Police Benevolent Association and me, an introductory meeting regarding the survey that was, the information was shared, but not the document at that time. And then a follow-up meeting discussing conversations with police officers. Nothing was shared, no tapes, no video, and nothing in writing at that point. The August 20th press release that went out unsigned was approved by me, but was a combination of authors, including Chief Brackney, Major Mooney, City Attorney Robertson, and myself. Mr. Rice was authorized to release the statement, but the statement should have been identified by the city manager. As to Mr. Major Mooney's retirement, he submitted his retirement paperwork on August 31st. In discussion with Major Mooney on September 1st, he agreed to utilize a six-month retirement allowance that is granted in our city retirement to stay on with the department until an interim police chief may be hired that meets the departmental and the community needs of Charlottesville. Major Mooney will be fully retired after this six-month period or before. I'm currently working to assemble the number of officers leaving the department over the past three years and the information that was provided, if any, as to why they left. Exit interviews are not often completed, but sometimes they are, is what I'm being told. Our staff is working on that right now. As stated before and has been asked, I have no audio nor video recordings provided by the PBA. Also, procedures are in place to create a committee of, for the, both the interim police chief search and to fill the permanent police chief position. Committee of a council representative, city manager's office, the police department, the PCRB, the Human Rights Commission, and at least three citizens to review candidates for the interim police chief. And then also to assist us in writing a request for proposal for the police chief search firm. This should ensure that police practice reforms and policing supporting our most vulnerable communities are prioritized, meeting our community's needs. This committee will assist in reviewing departmental action plans for the interim chief and the future chief to ensure that work activities again meet the identified priorities of our community. I'll continue to work with counsel and the public to ensure that we as a city and a police department will continue to progress in a fair and equitable manner. And I will continue to answer your questions the best that I can as long as it doesn't infringe on the personnel requirements of our employees. I believe these were the list of, of questions that I had. Of course, if there are others, please make sure that I have those and I'll answer those accordingly. And that's what I have, Madam Mayor.
So the question regarding the, could you, so your answer for the PBA is that you had two meetings with them, an intro meeting where you did not receive any information and a follow-up meeting where you, what happened at the follow-up meeting?
The initial information, the, the verbal information from the survey was shared with me, but no documents. And the follow-up meeting was an audio recording that I heard but did not receive anything of.
So what was on that audio recording?
It was an officer's discussions with a PBA representative.
Which officer?
Yes, ma'am. We're starting to get into personnel there that I'd rather not say.
So the PBA, you have discretion? Like, how did they get the discretion to, your discretion to discuss personnel?
I didn't. They shared their, their audio tape.
About an officer?
Yes.
Was the officer the chief of police?
No. No, ma'am. Sorry.
So if you can't share who was on it, what were the contents of the audio tape?
I found it not very much at all. I didn't, I didn't get much out of it. It was just the conversation between a police officer and a PBA representative.
I gathered that, but I'm asking you specifically what information was on the tapes.
It was just the conversation between the two regarding the police department.
Do you remember the conversation?
Not really. I didn't take much from it, so I didn't.
And did that conversation factor into Major Mooney's retirement or your decision to?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Could you give me some more information since I am apparently the only one concerned here about this, about what the personnel discretion and when you choose to exercise it and when it can be discussed publicly? Just to give us a jumpstart for the next meeting in a month after this incident have occurred before we may be able to discuss it?
I just think that things are, that are individualized with any of our employees that were not of a public nature would be, would be something that would be personnel in nature and not disclosable. That's something I would, I would rely on the city attorney for giving me advice on. And so the more information I have that I can try to answer, then I can get advice from the city attorney's office of whether I could share that or not and not infringe on the personnel rights.
So if you gathered information from officers and you made a decision to remove the police chief as a result of that, is that the officer's personnel or the chief of police personnel?
I believe that it's the individual officers, their personnel rights, that they have a confidentiality in sharing information.
Okay. So has the number of officers you spoke with, is that still the same number?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many is that?
I believe that I said I'd spoken with six.
So you are saying now that you made the decision to fire the police chief after speaking with six officers?
Well, I spoke with other people as well.
Could you share who those people were?
They were regional law enforcement leaders.
So is that including the former police chief of the city of Charlottesville?
Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not getting into the confidentiality. I mean, that's something that, that people shared information with me knowing that, that I would not be sharing.
So in the past, you have said that that has been UVA, the County of Albemarle, and the ECC. Is it still those three organizations or are there additional organizations?
Those, those are the three, yes, those three.
Councillors, any other questions or comments? So I would just like to add, since there's no other questions, that based on my understanding of events, the issue at the ECC had to do with an illegal contract steering issue. The UVA is the former police chief of the city of Charlottesville who the chief has been trying to fix and remedy some of the issues that he allowed to go on in the organization when he was the chief of police. And the Albemarle County Police, part of the reason that we don't sufficient information in the DMC report regarding police departments is because Albemarle County wasn't interested in doing a deep dive into their police department. And so I say that to say, if you have said in the past that the reforms that were taking place were the reforms that were necessary in the police department and that what, just a general, I think you should be able to give us a general understanding of what the complaints were and how you made a decision that those complaints were more important than reforming racist policing practices in a community that have devastated the black community in this, in this city.
What I would add, I, I don't know how much you are able to discuss, but I certainly want greater clarity on motivations of the decision, exactly what they were, and then what the plan for the future direction of the department as well as criminal justice reform efforts that the department was involved in relating to Marcus Alert, just, just one example, some of the task force that has come together. Because I think, you know, one of the concerns I have, and I think it's certainly a concern in the community, is whatever internal reasons that were going on that maybe can't be discussed is just, given the timing of it, an impression that, you know, it's a direct response to the PBA and the fear that regardless of intent, it sends a message that reform had gone too far in that if, what, I think it is absolutely vital that every next step taken forward ensures that that is not allowed to happen in terms of reform being rolled back and allowing there to be a message that succeeds that when reform efforts are taken, that it won't be tolerated. I think we have to send the exact opposite message. And that's certainly a concern I have. And obviously, a concern of the community is the signal it will send and then what specific steps we're gonna take forward getting interim and permanent leadership. Because I don't think it will be at all acceptable for it to be leadership coming in that is rolling back any reforms and wanting to return to a culture of policing where there is not as much disciplinary action, where the response to protest events is not focused on de-escalation, where there's not continued effort on the Marcus Alert system and efforts to bring in mental health and behavioral health into the service delivery model of the police department, et cetera.
And, and Counsel Payne, that is exactly our intent.
But do you have any answers to the questions?
I'm sorry, Mayor, to the question of?
Motivation, how the decision was made. Based on a summary of the information that you received, how did you decide that what they, those six officers and these agents, regional agencies were saying were more important than the reforms that were taking place to change policing practices in the community predominantly affects black citizens?
Mayor, I, I took the position that both are, are important. Without the, the respect and without the following and the, the confidence of the officers of the police department, that the rest of the direction, which had been going in a positive direction, could not be completed. That was my rationale. It was also, as I've stated before, I knew that there would be expected changes within the department that should be remedied. And it was my position, the only way to remedy that would be a change in the chief. It was that direction. It was a no-fault. There were no particulars. But that that direction needed to change to preserve the department so that it could continue to provide the safety and protection that our citizens deserve.
Sorry, I didn't have the surveys upstairs. So you read these?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay. So.
And, Mayor, I thought we had decided this was not going to be on the agenda this evening.
Oh, no, I asked questions last week. So these are my questions that I'll just clarify to make sure that they get answered. And this isn't any personnel, so I can ask these questions.
I'm not sure what the dividing line is and necessary to move to amend the agenda. You obviously felt it was necessary to move to, to amend the agenda to try to get into these kinds of things.
Oh, no.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what your rules are because they're your rules.
Actually, no, not. We amended the agenda.
Not to include this issue.
Excuse me. In the past, to discuss issues related that councillors brought up. If you remember, we agreed upon this because some councillors, mine mainly, asked questions weren't being answered in the past. It also came up when we were discussing who we would be bringing on as a city manager. And you all agreed that if we needed to have more public discussions because some questions weren't being answered, that we would have this time period. So if I asked questions the last time and the city manager did not answer them, this would be my, this is the time for that. And so I'm just helping get my questions answered. And since it's the 20th and this happened on the 1st, there should be answers.
So will we be having the discussion next meeting that you wanted to have that you apparently don't feel we can have tonight?
Lloyd, I asked some questions. I'm allowed to ask questions, my questions weren't answered.
I'm just wondering whether we're going to continue the discussion when it's on the agenda.
There have been a lot of questions that are not answered, um including, we haven't heard from the. Dr. Brackney, from police chief, I guess, whatever. And so I think that that is a part that we haven't brought into this discussion, um her viewpoint on what has occurred. So there's lots to ask, but my question right now just centers around. This and I can wait until later when we have the discussion on what are the future practices. If you all would like that, but I think if you read these climate surveys, um the leadership surveys and. The officers had issues with what Chip? What were the officers' issues in the surveys?
Mayor, I hadn't I hadn't prepared that, I don't remember that being a question for tonight.
So you made a decision to fire somebody and you're saying that you can't recall with the main issues of the survey?
I can, what I'm saying is I wasn't prepared to answer tonight so that I could be specific with your your answers.
But you know the information, so it could be a quick answer and we could move on.
I'm I'm not sure that it can be a quick answer, it's a very complicated subject and I and I spent an enormous amount of time weighing. A number of the issues.
Okay, I'll save my comments at for the end then of the meeting. Are there any other um questions or comments?
Well, I would just echo, I think these are legitimate and important questions and I have a concern about, you know. Not discussing the personnel things and laying the parameters, but I do think this is a conversation that clearly needs to be had publicly.
And I would just like clarification of why we keep calling this personnel. Because if you all read the op-ed piece, clearly you're not concerned about Chief Brackney's personnel or her reputation, based on what you wrote. And so whose personnel is more important to discuss at this um time is a question I also have. You're discussing her publicly, you wrote an op-ed about her and put it in the newspaper. You've listed that the surveys were included in your deliberation and even though there were counselors who stated at the last meeting that that wasn't a consideration. And um I think that more importantly, if we are talking about that we were. Assessing or motivation behind something with someone's action or integrity, that the person who made this decision. Integrity should not be questionable. Next um section is the Community Matters. We have eight pre-registered speakers and we have. Uh nine additional speakers and we'll have room for eight of those that's on the waitlist. And if someone is not present, then we'll be able to take um comments from the. More comments from the public and then there's of course a Community Matters. Section, excuse me, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Will, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Walker, of the eight who signed up in advance, I see six of them on the webinar right now. My suggestion would be we um take the first two from the waitlist as slots seven and eight. And then um if you're in the audience and you'd like to get in line, please click the raise hand icon and if you're on the waiting list. Please go ahead and click the raise hand icon to get in line. Each speaker tonight will have up to three minutes to address counsel. The first speaker who signed up in advance, I do not see on the webinar, that person's name is Kalila Kerefakargbo. I will keep watching to see if that person uh shows up. First person we'll go to is Sarah Rim Kaufman. Sarah, you're on with counsel and you've got three minutes.
Hello, nice to talk with all of you, I've been in touch with you via email, I'm Sarah Rim Kaufman and I live in the north downtown area. I'm a professor of education at UVA and I've lived in the area for twenty five years with eleven years here in Charlottesville. And I will say as a white woman. That I will say what so many people say about Charlottesville, it is an absolutely lovely place to live and it's been a wonderful place for me to raise my kids. And um I've been deeply disturbed that there are many families in our city. Who don't experience the safety that my children have enjoyed. And don't cannot go up on their porch and um can't let their kids play safely. Starting in about February, I became familiar with the Buck Squad and the efforts of the Buck Squad. And starting in March, I started following the work that they were doing. I was impressed that it was a group from within the most dangerous communities here in Charlottesville themselves. And I got to know um the group a little bit and a little bit about how they do their work. And I've been very impressed with their efforts um during this period of time. My understanding is what they do is they step in to interrupt violent acts. And I know that this is something that you'll be voting on today about whether to allocate funds to them or not. And the question often comes up is how are they different than the police? So people call them, they send out four people, two for each side of a conflict. The people who go out are unarmed and what they do is they intervene to de-escalate the conflict. So there's a few things going on here, one is that people who may not want to call the police are comfortable calling Buck Squad, they've earned a lot of trust in their community. And the other is that these are people who are going in completely unarmed with the goal of reducing. The the tensions that are existing. So it really is something that complements the efforts of the police and does not compete with the efforts of the police. My understanding is so far they've had forty nine successful situations that could have resulted in gun violence and didn't. And um I just encourage you to think carefully about the work that they're doing. And I ask that you um give them this uh funding support that they've requested. Thank you very much, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Myra Anderson, Myra, you're on with counsel and you've got three minutes.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, you might have to speak up just a little.
Okay, so I wanted to um speak about a few things. The first one is, it seems like every few days I'm hearing that there has been a different shooting somewhere in the city. And what's bothering me about that and why it's of great concern is because sometimes it's in these same neighborhoods. And as a mental health advocate, I am deeply concerned about the mental health. In neighborhoods where people are being subjected to this, kids, you you hear about gunshots going through people's windows and things like that. So I really think as we're having conversations about funding and various things like that. Mental health needs to be at the forefront because trauma, whether it's vicarious trauma or otherwise, affects mental health. Secondly, I wanted to speak um about Chief Brackney. I wanted to say, first of all, I wanted to read a quote that I read in a paper from Mr. Boils, which says. In order to dismantle racism and eliminate police violence and misconduct. Well, the part that says dismantle racism is what really has me because you have a situation where you have a white city manager. Who's fired a black police chief and using the term in order to dismantle racism. I would argue that that action in and of itself is actually the epitome of systemic racism. And furthermore, I would say that another quoted in that same article says, while very good work and progress has been made. If that's the case, then I'm still waiting for an explanation as to why all of this came to be because it's very, very confusing. And you're talking about creating a different culture, what kind of culture is that? Is it one that lacks accountability and transparency? And finally, you talked about um community groups and her not engaging or having collaborative relationships. I would like to know who you assessed in the community, what community organizations specifically to come up with that? I would like to know, and from the comments you just made about the six officers that you had contact with, that you, these unnamed officers. I would like to know the race of those officers and I'd also like to know had any of those been subjected to recent disciplinary actions. And finally, I would say in my last thirty seconds that I take big issue with the fact that Mayor Walker. Requested that this be be on the agenda at the last council meeting. And all four of the white counselors went silent. White silence is white consent. And I really, really, really need you to understand that not speaking up, you're continuing to perpetuate the cycle of the problems that we're trying to move away from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker that signed up in advance is Jeff Vogel. Jeff, you're back on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
I thank Myra for that careful analysis, maybe the four white people on council will start thinking about what role they're playing in this process. Let's get some truth out about what happened with the police chief. Mooney was taped by the PBA saying negative things about the police chief. The PBA threatened to reveal that publicly. Chip couldn't tolerate that. Mooney immediately retired, immediately retired after thirty years, why? Because he know his position was untenable, having gone outside of school and said negative things. Now, anybody in any corporation or any business who went to a rival and revealed information to them would be immediately fired fired. That PBA does not stand for any of the things that you claim to stand for, Mr. Boils. Your cooperation with them is outrageous and tell us the truth. It was because of that threat to reveal that tape that you decided you had to act quickly. And get rid of Chief Brackney and that way you could convince Chief Mooney to stay on because he wasn't under threat of discipline. For having done what anybody else had done, which would require discipline on their part. You don't want to tell us that truth, do you? And now we've got Chief Mooney sitting there, who's apparently beholden to the PBA and is willing to tell them. Anything they want to hear, we've got him sitting running the police department, we've got Chip Boils, who's afraid of the PBA and ready to give in. Because he's afraid of an insurrection, so what he does, he doesn't focus on the insurrectionists. He focuses on the top, now you've got a substantial number of cops in this town who are racist. You've got a substantial number of cops in this town revealed by that survey that hate this town. That think that the police chief was kowtowing to the activists, that thought it was wrong to allow demonstrations in this town. That don't believe in the First Amendment, what are you doing to get rid of them? That's the problem in this town, it wasn't the chief, it was the lying officers who still have the mentality of aggressive. Remember, you 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 signed on to that language, aggressive warrior type approaches. You signed on to that language, you've got that cops, you're the director of public safety, you do something about that instead of coming to us. Running with your tail between your legs from the PBA. And hopefully, Snook, you'll stay out of the way of this because you don't have the interests of the public in mind. And you like to obfuscate things, put things off, not discuss things, not accurately describe. Either you don't listen or you simply like to obfuscate. So it's disgusting watching the you five people here and I have to regret the people that I endorsed and supported. For this city council, sitting there on their rear ends.
Thank you.
The next speaker who signed up in advance, I don't see on the webinar, that was Priscilla Elabor. I'll go to the next one. Nancy Carpenter, Nancy, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Okay, good evening, I'm reading you an email that I sent to counsel on September third. Good afternoon, after the events that have transpired from the last board meeting, I mean PCRB board meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty one until today. It has become abundantly clear to me that Chair Brown is not embodying the purpose of the Charlottesville Police Civilian Review Board. To refresh your memory, the bylaws state that our purpose is quote, to provide objective and independent civilian led oversight of the Charlottesville Police Department. In an effort to enhance transparency and trust, to promote fair and effective policing and to protect the civil and constitutional rights of the people of Charlottesville, end quote. He has not been transparent with all members of this board regarding his year-long secret information gathering operation. In order to participate in an action to have the police chief, Dr. Brackney, terminated from the position. Even today, September third, twenty twenty one, he is identified on the Jerry Miller Show as the chair of the PCRB, which gives the impression. That the board somehow endorses or supports his statements. This is a misfeasance of the duty of care he committed to when he accepted this appointment to the board. Now, expressing his opinion publicly is a legal act, although by doing this at a board meeting, he has done great harm, the harm has been. To to the ability of the board to now act in a way that is transparent, does a shadow board exist? To empower us to act in a culture of mutual respect, impairing community engagement when we are seen as amplifying. Voices of officers who do not like their leadership instead of voices of those who have been disenfranchised in so many ways. Common ground will be difficult to establish with all the stakeholders now and public purpose is affected by this. How can the board be seen as serious and championing quote, just equitable and legitimate policing policies, quote, when two other additional board members supported this misfeasance? And in bylaws, article two, item G, the board has been delegitimized from ever being seen as effective in the execution of these objectives. As long as Chair Brown remains on this board, the open gloating that has been done since Dr. Brackney has been removed is nauseating. Quote, winter is coming, end quote, really, a Game of Thrones reference to war, why? Quote, white supremacy didn't do this, I did this, quote, that is so confusing, I am open to discuss this with any council member. And to date, Mayor Walker is the only council member that uh connected with me regarding this. Mr. Snook did reply to Mayor Walker's comment, but not to me directly. And I really think that I would like Mr. Payne as our liaison to the uh city council. For you to consider having a public hearing, whether on this city council or getting uh our board chair to have a public hearing. On his uh investigation, what were what was his, what were his parameters, what did he use, what models did he use in his investigation? You talk about personnel issues tonight, what personnel issues was he privy to that perhaps, you know, may not be um something that he should be privy to, so. Uh I really think that um I don't like being on a board that is being seen as the side chick to the PBA. And I hope that um this will also be part of any ongoing conversation that you may have, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers who signed up in advance are Gregory Weaver, who will be followed by Tanisha Hudson. Gregory, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Greg Weaver, I live in Frye Spring. Last meeting, I commented on how we as a city must start to view all issues through a climate lens. And in doing so, you must be resolute in making and sustaining transformational change in the way that Charlottesville operates and we, its citizens, live. Council has heard from many about the future land use map. Increasing density in the city is mostly is most certainly an issue of economic and racial justice, it's also one of climate justice. Know that as Seville grows more and more unaffordable, more of our working class neighbors are getting pushed out into the county and beyond. In order to get to work, they are forced to drive longer distances, furthermore, the city is just not planned in a way that curbs reliance on single family vehicle use. As a result, transportation accounts for twenty eight percent of the city's greenhouse gas emissions and a whopping fifty two percent of the counties. Simply put, if the city were denser and we transformed its infrastructure to prioritize pedestrian, bike, bus and a bit further down the road, but still relevant to consider now, rail traffic. We could all but eliminate those emissions. The thing is that global warming will not wait for us, it's here. Our climate has changed and is actively changing, hurling us towards catastrophe. The city must lead on climate, we must act as urgently aggressively and proactively as we can in this moment. The rezoning process has been going on for years, we've wasted time. There was a flum redraw between May and August, the August draft catered to the loud voices of the city's wealthy homeowner minority. A minority that will be least affected by climate change, a minority that will continue to live comfortably in their bubbles. Bubbles at the working class and most notably, our working class neighbors of color do not have the luxury of having. This draft was worse for density and bludgeoned climate impact. We wasted those three months and we've wasted time since to develop a new map that preserves a number of issues with the August draft. Completing the rezoning process and allowing for as much density as possible right now is critical to meet our climate goals. We need to get, uh we need to act to get this over the hump so we can focus on retooling our streets to put an end to. The mass accommodation of the climate killing, economically damaging, single family vehicle. And to be to be clear, I'm not saying we just green light what we have just to get it done. We don't have time to pass half measures, only to say, okay, well, maybe we can increase density later. Instead, I'm calling on you, counsel, to be more vocal and to use your influence to a greater advantage in this process. Assert demands based on your. Assert demands based on your climate goals and the equity goals that the Flum is supposed to be based in. Lead in order to get the densest Flum map we can in the next draft, instead of continuing to sputter along with incremental change that will never outpace climate disaster. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanisha Hudson, and then we'll go to the waiting list, Carol Carter, and then Kate Fraley. Those are the next two mayor that I see in the audience. Tanisha, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Can you all hear me okay?
We can. You might have to speak up just a little.
Okay. So first and foremost, Lloyd, Sina, Heather, you all get so irritated when this topic comes up about the chief of police. And I feel like you get irritated because you were his three. You all knew about it, and that's why Michael and Nakai were left in the dark. It's very evident. Second off, this is white people protecting white people. And Chip, you know, you and I had a phone conversation. If I knew this shit was going on when we talked on the phone, you know it would have been different. And that's why I'm coming for your ass right now. Number three, Chip was hired to stabilize and take Charlottesville in a new direction. He is not doing that at all, period. Nine people have left under Chip, and one was an intentional fire because him and other people were also on those recordings. I don't care what y'all say. Nine people have left. So how is he taking this city in a new direction? How? He's willing to save one person. And eight, nine other people have left from this city, and he didn't do anything to save eight other ones that walked away. But he saved one. He saved one. Eight other people left. So you telling me that people who cared about saving money on the budget, equity work, justice reform, ways to generate additional money for affordable housing, they don't matter? But we care about police. But we care about police. Look at where y'all priorities are. So you care more about officers sending naked pics, sitting in a parking lot, doing whatever the hell they want to do? Doing all types of stuff while on the clock, while on the clock, they're doing this stuff. And it was recorded. And that's what was disclosed in those videos. It was disturbing stuff. You said it, Chip, and Mooney said it. So if it's personnel, y'all surely share personnel information with me. And then you text me and said, "Thank you, Ms. Hudson, for our conversation. It helped me make my decision." Is that not personnel, Mayor, or is it? Is it or is it not? It is, it's disgusting. And y'all so busy offing each other down there. That's why can't no real work get done. Because y'all off the last black person. And then you off the last two black people before that person. Y'all too busy offing people down there. And then you try to step away from race every single time y'all try to step away from race. But can't none, nay one of you white spots on this TV right now, tell me why six black people have left this city? Why have six black people been forced out of this city? Why have six black leaders left this city? Six. And I'm saying six because Nakai is the next one. You done drained her. Six. It's disgusting. And all of you should look in the mirror at yourself and ask yourself, do you, do you not like black people? Or do you have a problem with black people having some type of authority over you? Or do you feel inferior when your leader don't look like you? Because you don't got to say it publicly or on camera. You saying it exactly what you doing there. And you've done it since 2018. You've done it. It's disgusting. All of y'all need to seek some help. And Heather, twist your head, because you gonna be the next one.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Carter. Carol, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. I'm at 852 Redlands Farm, 22902. I am on the board of the Botanical Garden of the Piedmont, and I speak for the board in saying that we are thrilled that we have the land lease for the garden on the agenda tonight. Frederick Law Omsdod, the landscape architect to design Central Park, saw scenic space as a tool for social justice and a place where people can be brought together without clashing. This garden will be that and a place for shaping and reshaping our community. It will be a civic landscape that provides opportunities for contemplation and thoughtful educational programs, as well as unstructured recreation and play. We can't take any open space, even an old leaf dump, for granted. What we've learned as we've improved the site with trails and cleanup is that people started to come explore almost immediately. A garden magnifies the experience of being in nature, and our location in the city lowers barriers of entry to these benefits. We've all learned in the pandemic how important being outside is for mental and physical health. Research shows time spent in nature lowers our stress levels, lowers our pulse and blood pressure, and even improves cognition and school performance for children. We intend for this garden to be of the community, where a beautiful, high-performance public space allows us all to come together and enjoy immersive experiences and civic and social activities. And we intend it to be an attraction for tourists and other visitors who then bounce over to a local restaurant or business. With all due respect to grandmothers, this will not be your grandmother's garden. This will be a garden for Gudrun Campbell's generation and beyond, with flowers to be sure, but also learning opportunities about stream and soil health and the complex relationship between plants, pollinators, birds, and other wildlife. The community wants this garden, as evidenced by the 96 site tours, 78 Zoom presentations, and over 300 active volunteers this year alone. Charlottesville needs this garden, and we can't wait to build it. This land lease is the vehicle that will allow us to raise the funds to build. It will give our donors the assuredness they want. Thank you for your support and for your service on this hard-working council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Kate Fraley, who will be followed by David Manca. Kate, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this time. I'm going to be talking in support of the funding for the Buck Squad. Violence Interrupters are community-based programs staffed by community people who have been trained in violence interruption. These programs have been successful for a long time and all over the world. Cure Violence was founded by Gary Slutkin. He's nationally and internationally known and has done TEDx and research projects. You can look him up. Gary Slutkin, S-L-U-T-K-I-N. I'm going to talk about some successes. Cure Violence program decreased by 6% in Crown Heights neighborhood in Brooklyn compared to an 18 and 28% increase in other areas of Brooklyn. That was data presented in an article in January 2013. In an August 2021 report by Cure Violence says the evidence of effectiveness has reduced shootings and killings in the U.S. by 40 to 70%. In 2018, New York City saw 30, 63% decrease in killings. In 2017, Philadelphia saw a 30% decrease in shootings. So, wait, there's more. In, in Evaluation of Cure Violence has shown that significantly reduces violence. In West Chicago's Garfield Park, the program reduced shootings by 67% in the first year. In another area in Chicago, across Chicago and different neighborhoods, it reduced shootings by 41 to 73%. Things like that are happening in Philadelphia as well. In Baltimore, they reduced serious funds by 69% in the neighborhood of Ferry Hills. The reason that they're doing them by neighborhoods, as is the Buck Squad. Buck Squad has been focusing on one neighborhood, but there are other neighborhoods, they have it in their materials to you, is because of this. In 2015, over a quarter of gun homicides occurred in neighborhoods containing less than 2% of the country's population. In Chicago, 70% of all non-fatal gunshots and 46% of gun homicides occurred in the social, in social networks containing less than 6% of this population. Programs that engage with and support these communities are far more effective than attracting violence than sending armed police. I hope you vote in favor to give them money and to put them on the budget regularly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our first eight speakers. We have eight additional hands raised right now. And David Manca, I did mention you would be next, but I was wrong. You'll be number six of the next eight. So we're going to do the hands in order at this point. Katrina Turner, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
I just want to say, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, after over five years, I finally received what's supposed to be the police report from my son's case, but this is not the police report that I saw. You know, I had a meeting on Thursday with Mr. Boils, Chief Mooney, and Ms. Robert, Rose Robertson. And listening tonight now, you know, they told me that they do everything possible, you know? But listening tonight and talking about the PBA and still protecting the police, I don't know how much now, what, what I need to trust in now. The officers that were involved with my case, and I reported it, they threatened the supposed victim to keep this protection order on her. Now, there's so much going on with police and so much that the community has said the police has done to us or to somebody we know and love. Now, I'm telling you, counsel, the two officers involved, the supposed victim told me that they came to her house three to four days a week and threatened her to keep the protection order on my son. Now, if we can get the chief of police out of here, because the police are complaining about her job and her job firing the officers who are out here doing wrong, and you all know I don't get along with the chief of police. But the reason she was fired, we really need to know that because the community has been complaining about this police department and the police for so long. When are the police going to be held accountable? And now the Chief Brackney is gone, these police are out here just running them up from what I hear. They're just out here now doing whatever they were doing before. Because now they feel a little bit at ease that Chief Brackney is gone from what I'm hearing. But the law is still in place, that they are held accountable. But I really need to know what is going to happen with these officers. And I reported that they threatened, they threatened this girl, okay? I don't care about her either.
Thank you, Ms.
I just want to know if you're going to get rid of the chief of police for this, you need to get rid of the police for what they're out there doing.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Our next speaker is Robin Hoffman, who will be followed by Gudrun Campbell. Robin, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Hello, everybody, and thank you so much, Mayor, for really doing what you said you were going to do. And it's been from my beginning of my experience with you. You allow people to, you know, talk, and you allow people to be honest and community, and this is amazing. I just want to say thank you so much for your work. But also, I wanted to highlight the gardens. I've been a volunteer there, and I did a video, actually three videos on my TV show, highlighting, but if you all want to watch it, I'm sure you'll be very impressed with the amount of work that these people have done. And ever since my videos, basically, you should, you know, you can just see next to CHS is like gorgeous. You know, they're, they're doing so much work, and it's all volunteer, and it's all, you know, just really good people. And on the YouTube, Robin Hoffman, you can see it. And also, we put together, David and I, the possibility of what a garden can do by bringing in the botanical gardens from Brooklyn and from Richmond and from Montreal. And it's in one, one of the videos, so it's like three series of episodes. But also, I want to say, I really loved very much Chief Brackney. I worked with her during an emergency, one-time response, and she's very procedural. And she, from the very beginning, as well as the mayor, you know, said, "I'm going to do this and that." And she did, and she's been sticking to it. And yes, we are all just thinking, what could she have done? And we're at a big loss. I just want to say that. Then also, I want to quickly announce that because of Charlottesville Public Access TV, six shows of Andrea Copeland, she is now emcee again. So I want to congratulate her for being our emcee for Charlottesville again. And then finally, what was I going to say? Uh-oh. Lost my pieces of paper. But anyway, I think that's it. Wait, one second. Yeah, so please participate in some of the events that are happening in the parks. Do wear a mask. The virus is like a cold, so it means that you can get it through your nose. And so, yeah, masks right now. Please wear your mask. I'm, I'm back to being a vaccinator. Thank you very much for not wearing a mask. Okay, bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gudrun Campbell, who will be followed by Peter McIntosh. Gudrun, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Gudrun Campbell. I'm the founder of the Charlottesville Youth Climate Strike, and I'm a freshman at CHS. In summer of 2019, city council committed to reducing community-wide greenhouse gas emissions by 45% by 2030 and 100% by 2050. In September of that same year, two years ago today, 800 people came out to urge the city council to honor their promises. Despite this, little action has been taken to work toward these goals, and climate has largely been ignored. This Friday, we're striking again to ask that the city council recommit and take immediate action to meet the city's resolved climate goals by requiring all city departments and projects to have a climate component and staff accordingly, and setting clear and public goals for the incoming climate planner. Ensure a climate-first approach to all school renovation projects. This means funding only projects that move towards zero-carbon schools, as well as retooling existing projects like HVAC, wall reconstruction, et cetera, so that they are energy efficient. And funding new green school initiatives, such as retrofitting existing infrastructure for efficiency and accessibility, installing solar panels, and more. Improve mass transit and increase density throughout the city to cut reliance on individual cars. Prioritize the recommendations set forth in the Community Climate Collaborative's Transit and Equity Report, including increasing service frequency, electrifying the bus fleet, adding covered seating and lighting to bus stops, and redeveloping roadways to covered seating and lighting to bus stops, and redeveloping roadways to prioritize bus, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic. Finally, focus rezoning efforts on making the city as dense and affordable as possible. I hope the city will honor its commitments to future generations for the sake of this community and the world it's a part of. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Peter McIntosh, who will be followed by Mike Fox. Peter, you're on with counsel and you've got three minutes. And you'll have to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Walker, and other members of council. I'm Peter McIntosh, just live 624 Davis Avenue for 46 and a half years, same house. My connection with the garden is long. When I first moved to town, the leaf dump was the place that I got compost, and my raised garden beds still produce lots of flowers and vegetables and fruits, thanks to the leaf mulch. I also served on the Parson Rec Advisory Board in the 90s.
Can I interrupt you just briefly? I'm sorry. It sounds like you have another speaker running the meeting in the background.
Uh, I may.
Sort of like being on the radio, it's creating that echo effect.
Is that better?
Let's try now. Sorry to interrupt you. And then we just lost Peter. See if he comes back here. Sorry, Mayor, I thought that might distract folks. Peter, you're back on, can you hear us? And you'll have to unmute.
There we go.
How about now?
Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay, thank you. I turned off my phone. My real connection with McIntyre Botanical Garden is I was the co-founder back in 2008 and served on it for the board for 10 years. Our basic success, I think, on the early board was to make sure that the botanical garden was free and open to the public. It was a very firmly-held belief that has carried on through the present, and I think that's one of the hallmarks of now the Botanical Garden of Piedmont. We worked with the city and came up with the MOA in 2015, after two years of work with Brian Daley and his staff, and parceled out the responsibilities between the garden and the city, helping each other in ways that were best for each organization. Both the city and the garden had funding responsibilities, infrastructure, fundraising. What's changed since then is something that I'm calling to lend my support for the land lease that the council will be considering. And what really has changed is that, as you well know, the city's needs and priorities have drastically changed since 2008, 2015. You're sitting with huge needs in education. The citizens will have to step forward to help fund that. But huge needs in affordable housing, we used to call it workforce housing, but it's a real critical need for the city. And it's clear that the city doesn't have, through its CIP plan, the ability to help fund the garden. The other thing that has changed since then was that the Y with its land lease has turned into a very successful amenity for the city of Charlottesville, without the city having to put financing into the pot. So those two changes, I think the land lease for the botanical garden is just a win-win-win situation. A win for the city, it leaves it of some of its financial responsibilities, but keeps it owning the property and making it free and open to the public. It's a win for the garden because it frees itself up to be able to go out and do fundraising, to immediately put some shovels into the ground, and not wait for four or five years down the road. It's a win for the public because, as a prior speaker has said, the people are getting into the garden, it's wonderful, green space, and
Thank you.
Lord knows, we, all the citizens of this
Thank you.
area, need it at this point more than before. So please support the
Thank you.
lease. Okay, sorry, I'm out of time. Thank you very much, Mayor Walker.
Our next speaker is Mike Fox, who will be followed by David Manca. Mike, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I'm Mike Fox, state legislative lead of the Virginia Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America.
And I'm Katie Fox, the Moms Demand Action local group lead for this area.
We urge city council to approve funding for the Buck Squad. Violence intervention programs identify those who are at high risk and work to reduce violence through targeted interventions. Gun violence occurs more frequently within social networks tied together by the places people live, schools they attend, and places of worship. It is further concentrated into a very small percentage of people. This violence frequently occurs spontaneously, following disputes or perceived disrespect between people who are known to one another. When a gun is present, these encounters are deadly. This is why groups like the Buck Squad are so important. A recent survey found that 2/3 of Americans, including 2/3 of households with gun owners and 2/3 of NRA members, favor funding for community-focused efforts such as these. There are proven community violence intervention strategies for reducing gun violence through tools other than incarceration. Thank you all for taking up this important issue and for your service on city council.
Our next speaker is David Manca, who will be followed by Don Gathers. David, you're on with counsel and you've got three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yes.
So, thank you for your time. I'm a city resident, Martha Jefferson neighborhood. I first moved to the city in 1992 as a student and loved it so much that I stayed. And I think the first speaker we had a while back, Sarah Rim Kaufman, wrote a really succinct and informative letter to the Daily Progress yesterday that was published. And so, a lot of people spoke in support of the Buck Squad, and that's why I'm speaking for the first time at city council, because I truly urge you to support the Buck Squad because of the work that they're doing, which would describe a lot better than I can by others on this call. And I've gotten to know them, though, over the last few months. I read about them in the Seville Tomorrow and Seville Weekly. And it hit home because I don't think there's anything more important than saving lives today of our citizens who need it the most. And, you know, getting a vaccine, yes, that saves lives indirectly, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about saving the lives of people today from gun violence, who live in our city, who are losing. And what really made it hit home for me was hearing from the Buck Squad members about kids in the neighborhoods where they work, whose families would not let them out of the house, not because of COVID, but because they were afraid of getting shot. And that's a mile from where I live, a mile from where my kids are. And it just broke my heart. And these guys are doing something about it. And I challenge you all, sitting there, that if you're happy with that, if you're satisfied with that kind of status quo, with those kids in those neighborhoods being afraid to step out the door, and their mothers and fathers afraid for them and their lives to step out the door, because that's what happens when the Buck Squad comes in, right? The guns, the guns go away. They literally, the people with the guns hide them from the Buck Squad. And just their being there, getting to know the people, this is hard work, it's dangerous work, it's one person at a time, it's one conversation at a time, but that's what it takes. And they're trained to do it, and they do it, and they love doing it. And I'm proud to have gotten to know them and understand what they're doing, and I've learned a lot from them. So I think this is your chance. This is your chance to do something. It's a drop in the bucket in terms of the budget of this city, but you can save people's lives today. And not just, you know, I'm not just, you know, there's a lot of gun victims who survive, and they're disabled, right, for the rest of their lives, or traumatized by it, or even if they're not hit, they hear about it, or they know it's happening. So please, please, I'm begging you, here's your chance to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Don Gathers, who will be followed by Forrest Calland. Don, you're on with counsel, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone's well. I have to say that, Mr. Boyle, I still feel that the community still has a lot of unanswered questions. I still would like an answer to my question. If we were concerned about racial equity, inclusion, and diversity, then why wasn't, I don't know what his official rank is, captain or major, Tito DeRette wasn't considered for the interim position for the chief spot. And sad to say, I really am of the opinion right now that your op-ed just caused more questions than created answers. I know that wasn't your intention, but I believe that that's just where we've landed. So the community is still in flux, still wants to know exactly what happened and what's going on and what the next steps are. And there's even more need for transparency right now. And I urge you, I urge the five counselors for some self-reflection, and especially Mr. Snook and Ms. Sina and Mr. Payne and Ms. Hill, that you all do some self-reflection and ask yourselves if you're really satisfied and content with the job that you're doing for the city. If you're okay with it, then, you know, so be it. But I ask if you really can look at yourself and feel like you all are doing what's best for the city and upholding the ideals of moving us forward. Because I think that many of the actions that have been taken recently and over the past years are taking us back. It's like someone was trying to create the model to make Charlottesville great again. God help us if that's what the mindset is. But I really am of the opinion that, and maybe I'm in the minority, but I really am of the opinion that we still have some, lots of unanswered questions, and the cities, the citizens deserve answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker for this part of the meeting will be Forrest Calland. And Pete Davidson, Joy Johnson, I see your hands raised. There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for additional public comment. Forrest Calland, you're on with city council, you've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. This is Dr. Calland calling back in. I appreciate your time and attention. I appreciate all the work that you're doing on racial and social justice, and I appreciate the time that you're giving me to talk about this issue related to emergency medical care in the city of Charlottesville. I'm right now sitting in the basement of the University of Virginia Hospital, where I sleep one night per week as the on-call trauma surgeon, waiting to receive the next critically ill or injured patient from our community. Anyway, with that as a background, I want to tell you that I rise to speak in response to the presentation provided to you earlier today by the city fire department in the city council work group. As much as it embarrasses me to do so, I will remind you briefly of my credentials so you know that I'm qualified to speak on the topic that I'm addressing, the City Emergency Medical Response System. I'm a tenured faculty member at the University of Virginia, where I began my residency in 1997, and have been engaged as a tenured faculty member since 2007. I've previously served as the chair of the Performance Improvement Committee for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia for the Office of EMS related to trauma care. I have authored more than 50 scientific publications that have appeared in peer-reviewed scientific literature related to care of the critically ill and injured. I'm a graduate of two top 25 institutions, including Harvard University and the Mount Sinai School of Medicine in New York City. I have no conflicts of interest to disclose to all of you. What you decide to do with the city EMS system will in no way affect my employment, my income, my professional reputation, nor my ego. It will, however, greatly affect a highly competent, professional, and experienced agency that has been the leading provider of free emergency medical services for the city of Charlottesville for the better part of 60 years, an agency that was at one time the busiest and most highly decorated volunteer rescue squad in the entire country. We provided all the emergency medical care in the city of Charlottesville for the better part of 40 years before it ever occurred to our city's fire department to do so. The reason that this conversation is so important is that the recently initiated changes in the EMS system have driven a stake into the heart of our organization, the Charlottesville Albemarle Rescue Squad, and have threatened its very livelihood. Perhaps not intentionally, but the city is seriously at risk to lose this organization by starving cars of the more than $1 million per year in net revenue that its providers previously brought in, and rerouting all of the basic life support emergency medical calls away from cars and to the city fire units. Having acknowledged all these realities, I want to make three points in response to the presentation you heard today about the design of our current EMS system. I worry that it is ill-conceived, inefficient, and dangerous. First, the current system is designed to put three, up to three ALS-staffed city fire department ambulances in firehouses such that they are geographically distributed, staffed by paramedics and ALS providers, and within reach of various corners of the city quickly. At face value, this seems like a great idea, but as implemented, it will annually cost the city more than $2.5 additional million per year when the Homeland Defense Safer Grant expires in two years. We are not against proximity-based dispatching, just the fact that it seems to be, have intentionally designed to exclude our providers and needlessly deploy paramedic resources to basic medical calls such as back pain and patients who are ambulatory, in order to allow the city fire department to gain a larger share of insurance reimbursements. I would beg the CFD's medical director, Dr. George Lindbeck, to engage with Chief Smith as the state EMS medical director, to comment on the fact that Chief Smith has designated that emergency communication center not send the closest ambulance in one of the clinical scenarios when it matters the most, in the setting of serious injuries such as a current motor vehicle entrapment
Thank you.
and firearm injuries. The system currently preferentially calls for a paramedic that is farther away from the patient
Thank you.
rather than the closest unit, which is often one of the cars' rescue ambulances. Please form the inter-agency council that we have
Thank you.
that we have begged you to form in mail and by voice and on the city council meeting. I hope you'll answer the question as to
Thank you.
why that was not part of the agenda today.
Are there any questions or comments? Well, I'll start at the end. So, the last meeting, the meeting at 4 o'clock, the individual, Dr. Calland, has spoke each time. I was just thanking him, as I do everyone, once they get to the 30 minutes, and sometimes, you know, I'm not either have set the time or I'm not following it, and he just ignored every thank you that I just said. So, I hope that when Chief Smith is in meetings with individuals who are taking his work as ill-conceived and dangerous and using that type of terminology, that you all understand why those meetings may not be as productive as we need them to be. And hopefully, you all don't allow another outside agency to determine the steps that a department leader takes with their department. That is not collaboration. So I'll start there. So, I think one of the other callers that had signed up but didn't call in talked about the shootings in the area, and since they've come up, you know, quite a bit, and as I've said every budget year and budget moving forward, I hope you all take into consideration, since I won't be here, that what has happened in the community is a result of poverty, and it's also a result of the policing practices that have been done in those communities in the past. It's a result of the history of the plantation system in this, in the city. And so, you're going to have to put as much resources into fixing that as you put in to policing. One of the things that came out of this, imagine in a Jesevo group, that came from most of the community members that were in that group until I could no longer give them gift cards to participate in that, but another topic, was the need for our kids to have activities, recreation spaces. I've talked to every city manager that has been here since I've talked to every city manager that has been here since I have been here about, you know, like the investment that was made at the skate park, a similar investment being made with the community needs being addressed in that. And so, the holistic approach that this is going to require, the investment, what Ms. Anderson talked about, mental health, the, you know, whatever the conversations moving forward, you know, like with the school board and education, and that people are not living in the depths of poverty that they are living in, that is what's going to change. So even if we construct new buildings, as I've stated before, we don't make those resource-rich communities and not resource-riches. And we give a lot of money to nonprofits. I've told you all this for years. And if those nonprofits are not serving the community well, which there are over 700 nonprofits in this area and the community is still experiencing the devastation that it has experienced. I have brought up a lot of ideas over the time, stayed up a lot of nights to work on them. Some people are in those positions. The performance management piece, I think, even if we hire for it, which I think we should do, hopefully those programs will start being monitored so we'll know what is actually serving the community well and those millions of dollars that are being directed towards these primarily white-run organizations that are primarily serving Black and other people of color and that are not serving them well, that if we don't take a look at that, that we are going to continue to be in the state that we're in. I've said that almost every meeting, and I'm going to continue to say that. I am, back to Nancy's Carpenter's comment on the PCRB, I would ask you all if it's still there, since not only did Mr. Brown begin to attack Chief Brackney around mid-July, but he began to attack me too, and say that there was a candidate running for council that you should support more and that shouldn't be perceived as me talking about elections since I'm no longer in it. But I know that had been a comment that would have come up there. And it is important, if you go back, these comments started in July. I went back just to make sure that I was clear on the time I'd had many conversations. Chip is here, hopefully, you know, this is not a topic that's up for debate. I think it is though, but then that's unfortunate. But once Chair Brown was informed that he would not be hired for the PCRB executive director, this is when the attack started. I implored city management to make sure that he understood the role that I didn't play in him not being hired and the role that from my understanding Chief Brackney did not play. If you go back to his Facebook page, he received that notification and he was on attack every day, starting the very next day after he received that notification on July 12. And unless he's deleted those posts, I'm sure people have screenshots of them. And all the way up until she was fired. And then I announced that I would not be running for reelection, which is not, again, because Chief Brackney was fired, because Chief Brackney is going to be fine. But what kind of work can really be done in this community? And I haven't been really getting anything done from being blocked and all these new rules and regulations that you all are putting in place. And then the integrity piece, I can spend all of my time fighting with people, as you all know, every meeting. Anytime it comes up, I do it. But I cannot spend my time working with people who don't have any morals. You can't get anything done there. It's been clear, but when I advocate for someone strongly, thinking that we're finally maybe to get a neutral lens and that person presents the same, maybe I am the issue. And I just have to acknowledge, I'll take my high-moral-compassed self and do something else. But that is something that we should not allow. As with all the heat that the chief got for what people believed to be not supporting that board, but what she was asking a lot of the times was what was the function and what the powers that you have currently, what are you doing with them? And there were people who thought she should not be asked those questions. But to have problems with previous board members and then to allow this board member to act in this manner, I have questions for you all regarding that. So board members that you all said were not a good fit, how is this individual a good fit? And I have brought it up every time there's been an application process, certain people. Why are they not allowed if there are other members who are allowed to be on the board and disruptive? And I have gotten nothing from any of you about that and no support. And then when it's someone, Heather, that you are friends with, Lloyd, you know, I already asked you questions about what kind of conversations you were having with Bellamy. I don't know about the other two of you and haven't said anything to you about it. But your personal relationships, again, should not impact you all to be able to do your job here and how that individual and the communities that are most affected by policing, if you allow this to happen, how it will impact those communities. I have one more, I'm trying to...
I would just say, and I don't disagree that we should never, ever let any personal relationships get in the way of us making the right decisions. Last, I know that we exchanged, while I'm in follow-up to Ms. Carpenter's email, I know that Councillor Snook had some questions just procedurally about this, considering, you know, this is something that we have to understand more broadly, what the process should be. But I did not consider this to be an issue that we'd get resolved.
So have you had questions regarding the issue so that we won't? Because again, I brought this up before, it's been brought up before by citizens. So when are you all planning to get your question answered so that we can get to a resolution?
I'm happy to take the follow-up just on the questions that we've already posed to get those answers this week.
Um, okay, I had another one, but I don't... Oh, Ms. Turner. So Ms. Turner made the comment that, about someone doing everything possible to assist her. And I just want to, Chip, I asked you again when we were doing the update, whether there was anything in the report that would change the outcome of the situation and whether that had been expressed to her, that the answer was no. And from her to say, because this has been going on a while and it's been going on the entire time I've been on council and even before. So when she made the comment, just do everything possible, I just want to make sure that she isn't expecting that something is going to change.
Mayor, we had that conversation. And what we expressed is we want to get her every bit of information that we can. Also, some state laws have changed where we were able to share the police report with her after July 1st that Major Mooney provided. I was also very clear to say, I didn't know if anything would change for her, but we wanted to make sure that we could get her any information that she hadn't already received that we were able to do.
So outside of the police report, what else is she expecting us to be able to give to her?
I'm not sure, Mayor. There is a question of a video that does not exist, that's been part of the discussion, I know, for several years. That was just, it was a mistype, it was using an older form letter. But to our knowledge, there is absolutely no video that would be available that she has asked for in the past.
Okay. That's all my questions. Any other questions or comments?
The only comment that I would make is that if you had used your prerogative as mayor to put on the agenda the issue of Bellamy Brown, we might have been prepared for it. And then I frankly expect that we will have that discussion. And I would have been prepared for that discussion had you put it on the agenda. You didn't. I'm not prepared to talk about it tonight. I will be prepared to talk about it in two weeks if you want it on the agenda then.
Thank you for acknowledging that I have a prerogative as mayor. That's the first time since you've been here, so I just...
I've never denied you that prerogative.
You have. But anyway, we can move on. The fact that I wanted to ask for the amendment, not just put it on there, and I wanted to see what you all were going to say. You all have been well aware, since before September 1st, the events that have been playing out. And so for me to just put it on the agenda, for someone to then say, "The mayor put it on, we weren't expecting it", I asked both weeks, knowing full well what I could do for you all to do what you claim you were going to do when you were elected. So that's why I...
What was that? I don't even understand what you just said, Mayor Walker.
What, I don't know what you had planned to do when you were elected, so you're going to have to answer that.
Well, obviously you did, because you just said that I had all these plans that I'm not following through on.
You did. You did make things, you did make public statements. Most of them were around civility and you're doing a good job trying to factor that into every equation, okay? But you all promised the community something. You know what that is. I didn't run it, I didn't pay much attention to you. I did hear some headlines because I was a big factor in a lot of the conversations. But the point now is, something occurred, it had been in the works. You all were aware of information before September 1st. September 1st was 19 whole days ago. If a decision this big and hopefully important, and I think you would have to be concerned about the person, to think of what the person was doing for it to matter to you, but let's just pretend any of you were, then you all should be ready to have a conversation about it. You should not need time to prepare. Because the decision was made in haste and based on that haste and conversations that had already taken place, you all should be ready, because I'm always ready, to have a discussion about why the decision was made and for you all to give feedback on why you supported it. And the fact that you all sit there, besides Michael, and I still have comments about how he phrases comments, but I know exactly why that is done that way. I don't agree with it. But the fact that the rest of you just sit there and don't say anything as if anyone else who is going to be reform-oriented in policing is going to take this community seriously. So what you are doing is doing a grave disservice, just as I wrote to you in an email. And unless you are motivated by getting more clients for you to provide an app defense for, you should be concerned about how police treat citizens in this community, as I told you before.
All I have said this evening is reminding you and here the audience that you have the power to put something on the agenda. The advantage of your putting it on the agenda ahead of time is that, for example, I'm at home right now. I have things at the office that if I had known we were going to be discussing, I would have made sure I brought home. I don't have it here.
Like what?
Like notes, past emails, et cetera.
So you can't pull them up?
I can, but I'm trying to pay attention to the meeting. I'm trying to pay attention to this meeting.
You have been in the kitchen before making something during a meeting.
I think this is appropriate.
It doesn't, Heather, he brought the comment up, so I'm just saying. I asked you all, I know that I could have put something on the agenda.
And it would have been very helpful if you had.
Since I have been here, that I haven't functioned like that, even though you all claim I have. So this conversation here, you all should be able to say publicly whether you all are in agreement with the agenda being amended. Don't then come back and put it on me for not having put it on there as if, Lloyd, you went on the radio, WINA, and told them that you had been having conversations for months. Now all of a sudden, you're not prepared, you're a defense attorney. Things change in court all the time, right? You need advance notice to be able to discuss something?
To be fair to the people who will be listening to what we have to say, yes.
Yeah. It's more like you have to get a story together. Because you have told so many tales, you have to see, make sure they're consistent. And I think you have shown...
Mayor Walker, you would rule yourself out of order if you were to, if somebody in the audience were saying that. I think it's time for our recess. May I respectfully suggest...
But don't tell me what's my prerogative when you have had enough time to prepare. We could have avoided this conversation if you had kept your comment to yourself.
Are we taking a recess, Madam Mayor?
Are there any other comments? 9:15.
Mr. Balls, are you back? All right, while this meeting back to order, next up, we have a public hearing resolution for reviewing program performance and setting priorities for community development block grant, C D B G and home investment partnership, home funds for program year um twenty twenty two and twenty through twenty twenty three. Um, and yeah, there you go. Miss Attack.
Good evening. So tonight's public hearing has two goals. First is to serve as a fo- forum for public comment for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. The consolidated annual performance evaluation report, which I'll call as the caper on the community development block grant, C D B G and home investment partnerships program, home. And then the second will be to have city council set priorities for the C D B G home funds for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. So the first will be looking backwards and then the second will be looking forwards. The goals and priorities that are determined as a result of tonight's public hearing will serve as the framework for funding recommendations made by C D B G home task force on funding made available by HUD after July twenty twenty two. Right now, we don't know how much the city will receive for funding for next year. However, we can guess based on previous year's funding. The city can expect to receive about four hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars in C D B G funding and about eighty thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and thirteen cents in home funds for the city and six hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars for the home consortium entitlement. For fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one performance highlights, so we're gonna go and look backwards now. C D B G projects benefited one thousand six hundred ninety-one people. Projects included technical assistance for microenterprises and entrepreneurs, reentry services, park infrastructure improvements, homeowner improvements and rehabilitation. For the C D B G C V and C D B G C V three projects, this included emergency short-term rental relief, community health outreach, technical assistance for microenterprises, coordinated entry services for the homeless and emergency financial services for low to moderate income Charlottesville residents. Of the one thousand six hundred ninety-one beneficiaries, on the C D B G A M I income chart, ninety-four point thirty-three percent were low income, so that's less than thirty percent A M I. Four point nine percent were low income, so that's thirty to fifty percent A M I. Less than one percent were moderate income, so that's fifty to eighty percent A M I. And then seventy-one percent of the C D B G and sixty-eight percent of the home beneficiaries were minorities. For C D B G C V activities, it's important to note that econ and public service activities will have success and growth far after fiscal year twenty one because it is a six-year grant program. And for the Belmont neighborhood Franklin Street sidewalk project, there were some improvements done in that activity, but until that project is completely done, that activity isn't closed out yet, and once it is closed out, it'll be reported in a future caper. Also, because of the COVID pandemic, several C D B G and home projects experienced delays throughout the region. So not just the city. Projects that are continuing into fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two will have their outcomes reported in next year's caper. For home, the city completed one homeowner rehab project under the home program for, compared to the overall goal of one. Under down payment assistance, the co- the city completed sixteen down payment assistance activities compares to the goal of eleven. Regionwide for the consortium, the home consortium included nine home buyer assistance projects, twenty-two rehab projects, six new constructions, and one acquisition and construction activity for a total of thirty-eight new home units. On the beneficiary income chart for the home consortium, twenty-five point six four percent were extremely low income, so that's less than thirty percent A M I. Fifty-three point eight four percent were low income, so that's thirty to fifty percent A M I. Twenty point five one percent were moderate income, so that's fifty to eighty percent A M I. And then again, um, sixty-eight percent of home beneficiaries were minorities. All comments captured today during the public comment period will be reported in the city's final submission of the caper report, and I'll send you guys the final document before um we send it off to HUD. Right now, the draft version is located on the city's website and the T J P D C commission site, and the link is in the council packet tonight. Next, we'll talk about the C D B G and home priorities for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, so we're looking forward. Staff is asking city council to confer- confirm the priority neighborhood and any additional guidelines that city council may wish on how future funding should be sent. Overall, staff recommends that city council move forward with the fol- following priorities. Staff asks that city council move forward with the priorities similar to the priorities outlined from last year. And that is, that can always be um amended based on how you guys see fit. Staff also recommends approving the twenty percent maximum allocation allowed for administrative and planning. And as a reminder, admin and planning funds cover all the grant requirements for running the C D B G and home program, so that includes staffing, environmental reviews, public participation. public participation, community engagement activities for the CDBG and HOME program, Davis Bacon, Section 3 requirements. And this year, it actually went towards covering part of the comprehensive plan, program review, and redesign, and inclusionary zoning program study. Staff also is asking city council to confirm the priority neighborhood funding. This year, Ridge will be going into its third and final cycle. This was first approved back in May 6, 2019 at that initial council meeting. A three-year cycle ensures plenty of time for community engagement and coordination with the Ridge Street Task Force and all city committees as needed to identify a potential project for city council to approve. Right now, the Sixth Street Southeast sidewalk and the Ridge Street Traffic Safety sidewalks are the two projects that are currently underway for that priority neighborhood. There are two additional line items for the priority neighborhood budget, one for the Ridge Street and one for Belmont Priority Neighborhoods. This is to account for the timeliness, substantial action plans that occurred this past 2020, 2021 year. As a reminder, Ridge Street and Belmont's Priority Neighborhood projects had budgetary amendments to help the city reach timeliness deadlines this past year, so that's to account for the projects that had to not get stalled, but there was a minor budgetary lull, and it was, this is to account for refunding that gap in those activities. For HOME funds, if there's any program income or reprogramming available, those funds will go towards housing activities to support for down payment assistance and homeowner rehabs. All priorities listed are consistent with the 2018-2022 Consolidated Plan, which is the CDBG and HOME playbook, if you will. And tonight's public hearing begins the community engagement process for this year. CDBG and HOME Task Force will be meeting virtually because of the pandemic to review CDBG and HOME RFP applications and make final recommendations for funding for city council approval, as well as the Ridge Street Task Force. I am available for any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any questions? Comments? I have, um, just, I think I've asked this before, but I don't remember the answer to it. So just when we do the, like, microenterprise assistance, is there a follow-up to see how the success of those long-term, or are we, um, are we just doing the initial, like, some capital funding for it, and then there's no, like, just do we follow up, um, long-term to see, like, the success of those ventures?
So at the end of each program year, I do a monitoring check with every single CDBG and HOME program, and I check 10% of everyone's client files, and I mainly check for the CDBG and HOME national objectives, as far as whether everyone's income qualified, what the program's income qualifications are, and the success rate for the program. The, I can check to see what the long-term success rate, if you have a particular program in mind that you wanted to see.
Okay, so you do have the information.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my only other comment was, and I, you know, we've heard this before, just with the amount of housing and those needs are, just the, when you're talking about housing or sidewalks, it's gonna probably be a comment that comes up during the public comment too, so just, you know, know that the community would like to prioritize, like, buildings and repairing buildings over, um, over that. I do think that hopefully, um, as the housing division that you're a part of, as that, you know, as you all develop more and, you know, that becomes clearer, that the governance structure that we hopefully will pull in place, that was the recommendation for the affordable housing, that we are also looking at how this money is spent and where it goes, and to make sure that those same guidelines that are determined to be needed, to make sure that we're spending the money as well as possible be put in, um, you know, be put in place too. And as of right now, we look at these as separate pockets, and I would hope that in the future that we're looking at every dollar we give, even if it's through grants. So that's not necessarily for you, that's more for Mr. Sanders, Mr. Bowles, and Mr. Ikofuna, but I just want to make sure that it's, um, you know, that we are monitoring and, you know, all of the funding that's going out and that the, and that the requirement, those government's recommendations that came through the Affordable Housing Plan, that even though I know the government has its own basis, that we are just making sure that we're spending wisely.
And that was a comment that came up with the Ridge Street Task Force, because housing was a big topic of discussion with them. One issue that we were having trouble tackle was getting a lot of property owner approval with housing rehabs. We're still trying to tackle that situation.
Okay. Any other, um, comments?
No, public hearing, right?
Oh, yeah, I was just talking about from council. No, okay. So we'll, I'll open the public hearing.
To address counsel on the CDBG and HOME programs, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Our first speaker is Joy Johnson. Whoop, I had her, and then I lost her. Joy, I'm gonna click your name again. Joy, can you hear me?
I didn't, yeah, I didn't unmute. I apologize.
That's all right, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Joy Johnson. I reside at 8028 Hard Drive, Virginia 22901. I'm a public housing resident. I'm speaking tonight generally about CBDG funds. I've always advocated that CBDG dollars are for poor people. It is to also revitalize distressed neighborhoods. It's also to, you know, just revitalize the neighborhood. If you were to look at all of the priority neighborhoods, there are more high-income people in it, which has changed the neighborhood. So there is a lot of neighborhoods that was, that was, in my opinion, there are some neighborhoods who were low-income community that were distressed neighborhood who needs, that needed to be fixed up. And now, if you look at it, it's more of a, it's a mix, but you have more 200, $300,000 homes in there, and that's the neighborhood that is still applying for CBDG dollars. So I would like for you all to take a look at that, just pointing out how I'm seeing my neighborhood. We spent a lot of money building sidewalks. Sidewalks can be done with capital funds. Why is it that you cannot use capital funds to do sidewalks and save that money to do something else in the community? It's always been my pet peeve. It's gonna always be my pet peeve, and at some point, I hope to bring back to city council, CBDG Task Force and all, what CBDG dollars are supposed to be for. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to address counsel, please click the raise hand icon. And this is the public hearing for the CDBG and HOME programs. Tanisha Hudson, you're on with counsel. Go ahead.
I also would like to just piggyback off Joy and get you all to really take a look at the neighborhoods who have benefited over the last, I would say, few years. I would probably go back as far as you can with this grant and see which neighborhoods that you've actually contributed this money to the most. Because I think overall, when we look at the city of Charlottesville, things that are typically given a lot of money here benefit the majority, and we know the majority are not white. When we look at economic development and where the economic development has happened, it hasn't been the lower portion of the city. You do nothing to make that part look good. Our parks look horrible, horrible, even compared to the parks in areas like Waynesboro and Stanton. Like, you all do a really poor job at uplifting the lower portions of your city. And if these CBDG community development grant funds are for neighborhoods and the community, can you remember that portion of the community that you often leave behind? Can you, can you just find a way to make this? We, we love to say that Charlottesville is a world-class city. The only class that you cater to is people who are high-class. There's nothing for nobody else. The makeup of this entire city and everything that you all do downtown functions around people who have benefited from the likes of UVA. It's sickening. Like, and we, we can't just keep saying this, and I've done the research, and I've been downtown, and I've met with different people, and I know where you put most of the money. I know where most of the money has went. I've done the research on the economic development. It's not okay. It's just not okay. And it's not y'all's fault, because y'all just got there, but it is y'all's fault because you can change it. You often say you know what's wrong with this place, and you want to do the right thing, and nobody does it. Every time we have a meeting about where some additional grant money can go, how we can benefit, how we can uplift this community or that community, you all don't do it. You just don't do it. Then when we talk about sidewalks being repaired, only sidewalks I ever see being repaired are sidewalks that benefit the people that got money. Because I could take you to neighborhoods, and if you look at some of these sidewalks, you'll shake your head. Y'all ain't doing nothing in those communities. We, all around, do better, do better.
Thank you.
Next up is Ange Khan. Ange, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is not the portion I wanted to comment in, but I would agree with both previous speakers on that, and I will join in community comment at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no other hands raised.
So, um,
Thank you.
I, I know that we, you know, there's certainly been conscious decisions over many years, and, you know, I've been involved in just these last few years, but where there was a commitment to wanting to have sustaining investment in specific neighborhoods so that those dollars could, could be, could be more impactful. And so I, I do, I do believe that that was a conscious decision that has been kind of supported for multiple years in a row with that intention. Also, just Ms. Attack, do you have, like, the history of just, like, can you remind us again, I thought you kind of, kind of talked about it, just how long we've been in these two neighborhoods and the neighborhoods that preceded them, and what kind of, just at a high level, what drove that decision-making?
Just real quick, before you answer, just to say I'll close the public, I'll close that. That's clear, but go ahead.
Yes, so Ridge Street has been 2021, 2020, and then it would be this upcoming year as well. Belmont's Priority Neighborhood has been 2019, 2018, and then Tenth and Page Priority Neighborhood has been 2017, 2018, 2016, and then 2015, 2014 as well. And then it jumps to Five Phil has been 2013, 2014, 2012, 2011. And then it jumps to Rose Hill in 2010.
There has been, actually, this has been a longer history than I realized of having, like, continuous support into one neighborhood over the course of multiple years with it, with the hope of making a greater impact on some of the larger projects.
Yeah, I mean, do phrase it like that just because we don't have, wouldn't have gapped project, or we don't want to have gaps in one large project like that. We usually put multiple years of funding into one large comprehensive project, if that makes sense, just because this, like, the one project that did recently close, a Tenth and Page project, it did use multiple years of funding. We do want to make sure that the investment is meaningful to give what the Tenth and Page Priority Neighborhood Task Force asked for, a meaningful contribution to the community. I mean, it, it does take multiple years' worth of entitlement funding to bring that type of activity to life, if that makes sense.
Yes. The last, if I remember correctly, don't have those notes open, but the last task force, the members and that discussion, because the conversation came up, like, South First Street being in the Red Street, you know, priority neighborhood, and making sure that there was representation. And so those conversations have been happening, and there has been effort made to make sure that there, I think the last time, there were some members during the vote who were not at the meeting or something, and we did discuss that later when we were voting on it. But, you know, I think there are several things that, if we, you know, talk about them as a city, that influences the discussion, you know, topics that usually come around, up around CDBG and HOME. So what people are saying is that, you know, the neighborhoods that used to be predominantly black and low-income, those neighborhoods are not predominantly black and low-income, so we don't have those conversations enough, even in your numbers, while the people, the number of black people who were served were 900 and so, and then, but there were a number of white families who were served at around 500 and so. And so, again, talking about poverty in the community overall, because a lot of times that we end up having just this poverty discussion around race, when there's significant poverty in the entire community. So those things may help. But back to the, another comment that I just thought of that came up, when we were doing these, while you all were talking, these rehabilitations, if we also keep track of whether, you know, long-term we are successful, that is important, because even the number of liens that I have signed from people selling properties that we made these investments into, to make sure that whatever, the intention of both the federal government and the local dollars intentions are being met, and these properties are remaining low-income and able to serve low-income families. And I know there may be different stipulations that we can, that, you know, we can't change based on HOME CDBG funding, but I think with the local funding, we can be more strategic about how to make sure that, that happens. And I know that's a lot about overall affordable housing and rehabilitation and not just disfunding, but I think we have to start looking, looking at those programs as a whole, no matter what the funding source is. Are there any other questions? Okay.
A motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I move adopt the resolution setting the city council priorities for the community
I move we adopt the resolution setting the city council priorities for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds for the fiscal year 2022, 2023.
There a second?
Okay. Mayor Walker?
I'm going to say no again. I, and Aaron, you know, I just appreciate your work, but the, the CDBG, again, the entitlement portion, what's in here? I think that there are some things that we could do differently. I have the question around whether we need to utilize the 20% entitlement the way we use it. And I have questions that I have expressed throughout the entire time I've been here about how the home funds are used and whether the citizens are receiving, you know, the best service possible.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snell?
Yes.
Okay, that carries for zero. Thank you, Ms. Attack, and have a good evening. Next, we have an ordinance for approving a long-term lease of a portion of McIntyre Park to the Botanical Gardens of the Piedmont. It's the first of two readings. Um, and there will be a public hearing at the second reading.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Walker. Over the past 10 years or so, city council has been discussing and planning of a botanical garden to be established within the McIntyre Park. Documentation previously approved at council level to authorize this project goes back to September of 2012 with a master plan of McIntyre Park. There have been conceptual designs, resolutions for agreements, an MOU with the McIntyre Botanical Garden. And then most recently in 2017, a final site plan approval for McIntyre Park. This is proposing a 40-year lease that would create, give the property for the creation of a botanical garden. Originally was under the Botan, McIntyre Botanical Garden Incorporated, who have now changed their name to the Botanical Garden of the Piedmont. The proposed term of 40 years, it also identifies the general boundaries of the lease within a eastern portion of McIntyre Park. Being a nonprofit and a charitable eligible organization, this lease can be provided for a very nominal rate. And that the lease amount, or lease period would be a 60-month that the construction would have to be commenced on, upon. And then the botanical garden would have three years to complete the construction once it begins. A little bit different than one of the original concepts is that this would be a landlord-tenant lease and not a partnership with the botanical gardens. The city is not asked to contribute any financial resources to this other than, once complete, Parks and Recreation would be asked to maintain the parking lot and the sidewalks of the parking lot area. So no funding from the CIP is, is needed for this project. There would be two requirements that we, we would want to maintain in the lease that would be city-sponsored projects. One of those is a stream crossing that's a bike pad bridge that would go through the site. And then the other is a stream restoration project where we would do some, some mitigation measures along a stream that runs on, I believe, on one of the boundaries of the property. The city staff recommends approval of this. It's a, it's a project that's been waiting for city funding and now the nonprofit believes that it can fund it in its entirety, but does need this lease to be able to finish its fundraising activities. With that, we'd be glad to answer any questions. And I think Ms. Robertson is, is on the line to answer any legal questions regarding the lease.
Mr. Bowles, I'm understanding that, you know, at a future date, there'll be further discussions around this kind of operationally, the, the usage agreement. I just want to make sure that's clarified as something that's separate from this discussion.
Yes, that, that would be separate and it would be so that making sure that all of the community has access to the park and, and at a reasonable amount. And, um, and that would be, that would be in partnership with the city.
Thank you.
I have just questions about the, are those items that you just mentioned, the pedestrian bridge and the stream restoration, are they already in the CIP budget or do they?
Yes, no, ma'am.
There are, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And, and the, the restoration is both a match and a grant.
Okay. Are there any other questions? So my only question just now, because I think I wasn't aware. So there will be a cost to enter this park in the future and then there will be a, no, okay.
Our, our understanding is that there would be a cost if you're reserving the, the community center that's there.
Okay.
But, but not for use of the park.
Okay, all right. I just wasn't clear just now and I thought that's what you just said, I remember, so, okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
I would just say like.
I just wanted to note one thing for you all. The lease does refer to reserving the city's ability to put the pedestrian trail through the property. The stream restoration should be referred to in that same section and it has been discussed over the years. And so if you all don't mind, we will add a specific reference to the stream restoration project in the same paragraph where, in the proposed lease, where we say we're reserving the right to do the pedestrian trail. And that would be added for the second reading and the public hearing. Okay. And Mr. Bowles, in terms of the CIP, is this on the current list or is this on the current unfunded list?
Uh, it, I don't know. I, I think it is, if Chrissy may be on, she would probably remember.
You talking about the infrastructure piece or are you talking about just the, the trail piece?
Just the trail. The trail and restoration.
Uh, so the trail, I'll actually defer to Chris Genzik. I think he's on.
Yeah, this is Chris. The, we have some funding for the bridge and trail, but not total funding for the entire trail all the way down to the southern end of the park. So we may have a future request for completing the trail piece. That was part of the original master plan agreement with the city, that the city would have built a trail regardless of the garden to provide public access to the entire park.
So it'll be done in phases?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, this is just a really great example of like the partnership possibilities. And it's, I'm just really excited that we're at this point because every year when we've heard from, from stakeholders that really wanted us to be able to fund the infrastructure for these facilities, it's just been clear that we just haven't been able to make it a priority. But yet, if, you know, something that there has been commitments towards. And so just give a lot of credit to the gardens for the work that they've done throughout the pandemic, just in a, you know, much of volunteer capacity and just the momentum that they have. And just excited that we have this opportunity for this partnership.
And I know that there are representatives on here. Did you all want to say anything tonight? Ms. Davis, Mark, Ms. Marks?
Thank you, Mayor Walker, for this opportunity. And thank you to all of the other city councillors as well. I just wanted to say that since the Botanical Garden started in, in 2015, it's been our policy to reach out to the community to get input about what this garden should be. Starting with our schematic plan, the community told us in a series of different public outreach sessions that we did all over the city that they wanted this garden to be a place to bring people together so we could get to know one another in a safe, welcoming and accessible out, natural outdoor space and help heal the community. And the Board of Directors heard that goal and felt, and embraced it totally. And the resulting schematic plan for the garden actually won a national award because it redefined the idea that botanical gardens are only places to learn about plants and stuff. And, and that the plan drew a, brought a way to bring the whole community together, people with all kinds of interests. And we're looking forward to being able to serve the community on many different ways. For example, the, um, in the past year, we've done a lot of outreach to many different organizations. And through these conversations that we've had with them, we've started developing all kinds of programming. And in the next year, we'll be offering literacy and arts and STEM programming in the garden. So we are listening to the community about what they want this garden to be and would love the opportunity to give as many of you an opportunity to walk around the garden and learn more about it in the next couple of weeks before this comes up for a vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, um, if there's no additional discussion, this is going to move to the October 4th meeting for second reading and public hearing. Okay. Thanks. Um, next up, we have a resolution ratifying or approving the formation by the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority of certain entities identified as limited liability companies, LLCs. It's one reading.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Uh, good evening, everyone, city councillors, city manager Boyle, citizens of Charlottesville. My name is Jeffrey Michael Meyer and I work for VCDC, which is a Richmond-based nonprofit organization that provides equity financing and technical assistance to agencies like the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority that are attempting to use low-income housing tax credits as a finance mechanism for developing affordable housing. And Mr. Sales has asked me to present this resolution on behalf of the CRHA. Many of you are aware, CRHA and the Public Housing Association of Residents have been engaged for several, several years now in a comprehensive redevelopment and expansion of public and affordable housing in the city. Crescent Halls is currently under renovation. And then if you drive down South First Street a little ways, you'll notice that there are three new residential buildings rising where the baseball field once stood. And that will soon be completed as South First Phase One Development. The resolution before you ask the council to ratify or approve the formation of certain entities identified as limited liability companies or LLCs that will enable Charlottesville's public housing developments to take full advantage of the equity generated from low-income housing tax credits. Three of the four entities you're asked to ratify tonight, Crescent Halls Reno LLC, South First Phase One LLC and South First Phase Two LLC, have already received substantial allocations of low-income housing tax credits from Virginia Housing. And the fourth that you're being asked to authorize, South Sixth Phase One, will compete for an allocation of credits this spring. The reason that these entities are necessary is simple. The low-income housing tax credit is a credit against the federal tax liability of the owners of qualified low-income properties. And while the CRHA is the owner of qualified low-income properties, as a public agency, it's not and can never be a federal income taxpayer. We wouldn't want it to be a federal income taxpayer. So for that reason, CRHA needs to form these taxpaying entities to own the properties in question and to take in federal taxpayers as partners. The partners want the low-income housing tax credits to offset their federal tax liability. And they're willing to make investments in Charlottesville's public housing in exchange for those credits. VCDC represents those investors and they've already made commitments of over $15 million in Crescent Halls and South First Phase One. And they're prepared to invest another almost $15 million in South First Phase Two. That's money that, without which, the scale of the proposed redevelopment would not at all be possible. You'll also notice that for each of these ownership LLCs, there's a corresponding management LLC. The management LLCs are the managing members, meaning that they are responsible for the day-to-day decisions being made with respect to each development and the ongoing operation of each project long-term. And for your information, the sole member of each of those management LLCs is the Charlottesville Community Development Corporation, which is an instrumentality of the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority. So as you can see, CRHA is in the driver's seat for all of these ownership entities. I believe that Mr. Sales has presented you with detailed responses to questions posed by the city staff. But I'm, I stand ready to answer any additional questions that you may have about these entities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No, okay. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution ratifying or approving the formation by the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, CRHA, of certain entities identified as limited liability companies, LLCs.
Second, the motion.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Snell?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that carries five oh. Thank you, Mr. Myers, Mr. Sales and staff for working on this. Next up, we have a resolution considering an off-cycle budget request from the Buck Squad for $50,000. It's the first of two readings.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're presenting this on behalf of, we've had a, um, three council members asked to put on the agenda for the Brothers United to Cease the Killing, the Buck Squad, that on September the 8th of 2021 submitted a request to the city council to support their efforts to reduce the cycle of gun-related crimes by implementing a community policing program that will provide assistance of crisis management in conflict mediation, mentorship and economic development, utilizing civilian patrols within predominantly black communities with low-income households and in high-crime areas. This is a follow-up. Council had previously made a $20,480 donation to Guns Down, a charitable corporation that was the fiscal agent for the Buck Squad. The services and projects proposed to be funded contributes to, to several of our goals in the city's strategic plan. They include self-sufficient residents through intentionally addressing issues of race. A secondary goal is to be a healthy and safe city through reducing adverse impact from sudden injury and illness, as well as goal five, to be a well-managed and responsive organization to fostering effective community engagement. The Buck Squad has unofficially been operating in Charlottesville since late 2020, but adopted its official bylaws on April 15th of 2021. Should the city council vote to make this a charitable donation, the donation the donation would come from your strategic and initiatives account, um, for which you have currently a balance of just over two hundred thousand dollars in that. Um, we can try to answer any questions, but um, it is the, this before you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I see that there are members from councillors, do you want to comment or ask questions first, or you want to hear from the members first?
We'd like to hear from them.
Okay. Um, the Buck Squad team, um, you have the.
Well, good evening, folks. My name is, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Terry Gignan, I'm the executive director of the Buck Squad, and we put forth this proposal simply because we've been operating for the last six, seven months. And it finally ran out of financial support for the guys that's out on the street doing this job. That's why we put this request in. We've been trying to get on their online budget, but it's been some difficulty doing it, so this is why we're here today. Everybody's aware of what we do there. I mean, we've been going through this with city council, I don't know, four or five months now, so I think everybody has information.
All right, councillors, any discussion, comments, questions?
The comment that I wanted to make was that I, I think that this is a really important and commendable effort. Uh, and I completely support the idea of, of basically helping folks in the community solve the problem themselves, you know, working with each other to, to diffuse the situations. It's a, it's something that other parts of the community can't bring to the problem, only they can. And all we can do is to, is to wish them well and give them a little bit of help doing it. So I think this is, this is an appropriate expenditure and it's, it's a great cause and I wish you all the best of luck with it.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank.
I, I think as we just continue to see just the conflict that continues in our community, it's going to take a lot of, every resource available to help curb this violence and um, certainly recognize that the manner in which you and, and, and other community groups um, can, can do this is, it can be might, way more effective. Um, in building that trust with those communities. And so, um, certainly have, have kind of been observing you all as you've even gone through your own growing pains, but um, really, really believe in this work and know that having our support really can help to um, to stimulate um, more support on, from, from other assets of the community. So glad that we can be at this juncture.
Thank you.
Okay, any other additional comment?
Um, I guess my only questions are, um, you know, I think this kind of violence interruption program is extremely important and, you know, one piece of the, you know, difficulty of trying to address gun violence. Um, the only questions I have are just around, I know in the, the application, what you've talked about is just, you know, focusing on South First Street and just, um, what if anything, the partnership with CRHA will, will look like and be, just because I know um, it being their, those properties just had to ensure they're involved as part of the process and um, you know, involving the residents there who live there to just ensure it's a successful program over time.
Is that a question?
Yeah.
Well, to be perfectly honest, we, to be, order to be sustained, we just need more funding. You know, we can cover other bases, I mean, we've been to West Haven, we've been the first street, which is our number one zone. We've been to prospects that we've known all over town. And people call from all over town, it's just not separated into these housing projects. I mean, if you look at the news, especially this weekend, gun violence is everywhere. But we are already in touch with the shooters and the victims. But just, what just happened this weekend, trying to resolve that issue, so we don't want to just isolate, we just say when the, this trouble started was primarily on First Street. We came in, we ceased it. We haven't had a gunshot report there that I know of, and I know nobody's been shot or killed. But we willing to go in any residence, but these are just the primarily residents right now, but this is going to expand. We were down for about six weeks where we couldn't really do what we do on a regular basis. And that's when the gun violence went up, because all the folk that correspond with us, family, friends, loved ones of these people doing a shooting and getting shot, we didn't have the resource to reach them. I mean, I got guys that work full-time jobs and still come out to support us whenever we out there. But we plan to expand, that's why I said in the beginning, I need this to be a, a line item for the budget, so we can carry this on until we cease it all, you know?
Yeah, it's very, it's very labor-intensive, so we, we send four people to every, every interruption. Um, and as Herb mentioned there, um, are, uh, if, that, that's, that takes time and money and all of these guys already have jobs and we'd like to be able to let the, let the Buck Squad be their full-time job.
Just to respond more directly to your question, Michael, I think as a part of the training that the group received, one of the measures that um, they were instructed to do was kind of focus on one area to be able to determine effectiveness. And so as their concentration was over in the South First Street area where the crime was really high at that time, following, um, you know, the death of Jamarcus Washington, which got them to formulate the organization. And their presence there has decreased violence over there as we're aware. So based on that, the Buck Squad has decided to expand to other high-risk areas. So to address your question directly, I think that initially when the training was uh, first deployed, they were instructed to be in one area so you can kind of measure effectiveness. And then based on what we determine success in getting those numbers down in that area, we feel that it's necessary to address the other high-risk areas that are experiencing increased violence from when we first started. Does that answer your question or give you a little more color there?
Yeah, um, it, you know, beyond like, and I, and I definitely understand that difficulty of just, you know, there's limited resources, so focusing in one area to um, you know, maximize effectiveness. Um, but the other, the other question is just, um, whether it's in South, you know, starting in South First Street or anywhere, just to be a CRHA property, just how to build that relationship with CRHA um, over time to have it be a successful long-term program that's in partnership with, with CRHA FAR and other groups who, you know, are just deeply involved in those, those areas.
We, we have talked to John Sales, we actually got a meeting, another meeting set up soon after this meeting is over. We talked to him several times about getting property or office space in all these areas where we pretty much have people there all the time. But I think him like most of it, just to see what our ci- city representatives are willing to do to help us before they jump out and help us, that's what I think really going on.
And with any added support and resources that would allow a more active relationship with all the properties where they can have visibility amongst more members of the Buck Squad, because the funding would enable us to hire more members so they can be out. So, I mean, as they mentioned, they all have full-time jobs. With, with increased funding that would provide visibility and having the buy-in from the city, we would be able to fundraise and get more donations from the public that would be able to expand our reach. So I think that with that, we would be able to strategize and have, you know, an onsite presence more frequently than what they've been able to do with limited members, because, you know, as funding drives up, that means, you know, less members, because they still have to generate income.
Right, any additional comments? All right, so this is a no vote for tonight and it'll move to the October 4th meeting for a second reading. All right, thank you all for, um, for your time tonight. Thank you.
All right, bye.
Right, um, next, uh, we have the, um, amended agenda item to discuss the, um, process for hiring, um, a new police chief.
Mayor, as, as I mentioned earlier, I'm looking back through my notes here. We are putting together a committee made up of uh, council representative, city manager's office, police department, police civilian review board, human rights commission, at least three citizens, um, that will assist in reviewing uh, interim police chief. We've identified two that have been recommended to us that we would like to bring to this, this group. Um, and have their recommendation then to, to the city manager's office, as well as then would come to the city council for your, your approval. In addition to that, we would also like to utilize this same committee to help us to develop the requests for proposals for a search firm that would do a national search for the police chief. All of this is to make sure, as, as many of the council members and especially, um, council member Payne has pointed out, so that we're not losing the momentum that we've gained over the last couple of years in the police department of, of beginning to have a, a true police department that's respective of the community. And so this would allow them to be part of that, and I think the first step to that is the, the search firm that we get to help us, as you have noted, this may be a very difficult position to fill. And that being able to identify the needs of the community very clearly, getting that out into the, the national search will be very instrumental. And so, uh, we hope to begin this process with the first leg of it, bringing in at least one of the two candidates for interviews, um, within the next couple of weeks.
Bringing in interim candidate.
For the interim, I'm sorry, for the interim candidate.
Okay.
We have, we have one that's, that's very highly recommended, um, from here in, in Virginia.
And, uh, so, okay, I'll get to that question in a second, um, but so the last time, police chief process, um, did you review that process?
Not yet, Mayor.
Okay, so councillor Hill, um, since I've been doing a lot of talking, what are your thoughts on what the recommendation is versus how the last process?
Um, we, I don't believe we had a, the interim piece, I'm not remembering if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure we had a, a lot of participation, um, in that.
I'm talking about the police chief, because the hiring of a new police chief.
For the full-time, I'm just trying to, there's two different processes that we're talking about. You know, council was certainly heavily involved in that process, um. I'm, we were, we were one of the panels that interviewed, um, the finalist candidates. Um, we certainly got an opportunity to review, um, the applications that came forward. And then I remember sharing the, the interview panel, um, with a city manager, um, Mr. Jones. And council waited and gave our input on, on those candidates.
So in terms of the entire, not just a couple representative, were one of the panels um, that interviewed all the finalists.
For the permanent city manager, permanent police chief, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Mayor, Mayor, I believe that councils, councils' direction there would all be developed when we get the search firm in place, because they would help to manage that process. And that would be where we would be able to determine, you know, the, the process for having all of council involved, um, what type of community panels we may want to have involved, have, um, what type of community input even before the ads go out, so that we're, we're advertising for, for the right candidates.
So, um, the interim police, um, chief is based on a recommendations that have come, from where have they come from?
The Virginia, um, must back you up, the Virginia Police Chiefs Association. And then we also inquired with a, um, a national search firm that gave us a name of, of a second Virginia police chief or second candidate that's from Virginia.
Okay, did you review the, um, last interim police chief? And, uh, he did a presentation, and I think it was the very next day that he decided that maybe this community wasn't for him. So I looked at that process?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. So it was the same sort of feedback, once the community members started giving feedback, unless I am misremembering, um, feedback on what community policing and actual reform should look like. Um, that police chief or interim police chief was giving a report. Um, and the community was not happy with the feedback that they received, and then that person um, wasn't happy with the feedback the community was given. Um, so I just think it's, um, important to understand how, um, difficult it was, um, to even arrive at the point that we were now. The other finalist for the previous police chief position was an individual who came to the interview and, um, was highlighting their work with Project Exile in Richmond. And because I had done some work in Richmond, I explained to the council what Project Exile and what they were doing during that time. Um, to primarily black families in low-income, um, neighborhoods in the area. And Richmond today, if you research them, have, has been gentrified, just like many of our areas are under, um, nail. And, um, the police, Richmond being labeled as murder capital of the world, and their police department response to that, um, label, and not so much an investment into people and undoing the historic, um, legacies that have been occurring in that city since, um, enslavement. That officer, um, didn't seem to understand well either. Um, so I do want to highlight those for both the interim and full-time, um. So, go ahead, councillor Payne.
Well, I, and I guess to that point, I'm, obviously it was on council, the last process, so I'm not familiar with all that happened. So maybe it happens in the interview panel process, I don't know, but I think it will be very important, both for the interim and permanent, to be very intentional about getting the right panel together and then coming ahead of time with some very specific questions, um, about specific things, like you've, in that example, you'd project exile, um, the, uh, during the Obama administration from the Department of Justice, the document about twenty-first century community policing, um, and just being ahead of time, both the composition of the panel and the questions we're asking, very specific and intentional, um, because one of the fears I have is, um, again, if we're not being very intentional about that, we could end up with an applicant pool, um, that is rooted in a very different mindset of policing that is not where our community wants it to be. Even chiefs around Virginia, you know, the, the chief of police in, in Badu-Tot County or, uh, Bedford is, you know, they're going to look very different than in terms of perhaps their approach to policing and philosophy, um, than police chiefs from other areas who are looking to do other things and um, we can end up with an applicant pool that's getting a chief of police that is not aligned with where the community uh, is clearly saying we need to be. Um, and I don't know exactly what it takes in that process to help guarantee that, but I think we need to plan for that now, and again, be very intentional about it. but I think we need to plan for that now, and again, be very intentional about it.
So, I don't think that you can, and again, I guess we're going to have this discussion at some point, um, before 2022. Um, but, how do you attract, um, a reform-minded individual? And what will you be asking? Or even the councillors who are going to be here, what will you be asking of that individual? Um, because people are going to look, they're going to hopefully research, um, the last search firm that we were looking at, um, for the city manager position, said that I would need to not be here for s- success to happen in a city manager search, which based on the fact that applicants have still been applying, maybe that's not necessarily the case. But so people are going to look at all that, they're going to look at the history. And so, um, how do you prioritize what the community who is most affected by policing, um, during a search?
Uh, uh, mayor, that, that's why I think it is so important to get the right search firm that can help us identify, because I think every community looks at reform in a different manner. And I think that they have to help us to, to identify our own unique needs and, and wants in reform, and then help us to put that into a package to then go out and attract a police chief that will meet those needs. Um, that's, that's where I think the real work is going to take place.
Maybe I'm not asking, um, so if we don't get a police chief, because we will need a police chief, so someone will need to fill that position. If there isn't a reform-minded police chief, if the interim person does not come in and is reform-minded, if there's no one internally that can be a chief of police who is also doing reform, how does the reform work happen? Because I think that, as a city, I'm not going to be on council, but I'm still, I live here, can't run me away. Um, and so, and I'm not going, anyway, that's another, but any, how do you ensure that the community who's most impacted by policing, that those needs get met? Because I think based on everything that's in the media, anyone who's actually doing this work will look at it and they may have concerns about joining us. So, what are you going to tell them about the work that we desire for them to do?
I, I think it's, it's create, well, one is creating the challenge. I think it's finding somebody who has the same values that our community has and wants to be part of that movement. Um, there's no real way to guarantee or ensure that we, we get that, but it's doing our due diligence of being very transparent and clear of what our community needs and wants are, and trying to, to m- mirror that with individuals that would then want to work in an environment like that. Um, having lived around, I don't know that there are that many communities that are as committed as the Charlottesville community. And I think that there are officers that would like to be part of that.
I'll save my comments for the end of the meeting for this. Any other questions?
So the final question is, you know, I have right now on this piece is with the, whoever the interim comes in, um, both even now, and then after the interim comes in, how to ensure that they're included on some of the ongoing efforts there've been to set up a Marcus Alert system, looking at the service delivery model, incorporating more, uh, mental health and social surface responses. Um, even particularly with the Marcus Alert system, that's something that also has associated state deadlines with it, um, which are still a little bit off, but the work needs to begin now to ensure we meet them of getting that system set up. Um, and just how to ensure that anyone coming in, that those efforts don't just get sort of put on the back burner.
Sure. Uh, well, I think for both the interim and the permanent, a very clear, um, action plan as they come in. Now, you know, what that action plan would be, the, the norm is, is a hundred-day action plan, but it could be a, a 365-day action plan of what is important, and then what strategies that the police chief will put in place to make sure that we're, we're meeting those, um, priorities. And then monitoring, uh, you know, routine reporting on how that action plan is getting implemented, um, I think is going to be crucial.
So the hundred-day action plan, was that set with, um, the former chief? Like a hundred days into your tenure?
Uh, no ma'am. No, it's, it's, it's norm, you know, my, my experience has been, uh, whether it's a, as a city manager, a director, or, or a department head, it's usually when a, a person comes into the position. Um, honestly, it's, it's something I think that, that would have been advantageous for me to do when I first came in.
Well, we, well, we can talk about you in a second, but we did, and there should have been some things that happened, and we talked about those things. But anyway, um, so the strategies that you, um, that the new chief would have, did you have that conversation with the former chief?
No ma'am.
Okay. So there's an action plan, and you will know moving forward what the action plan needs to look like with an officer, and you'll be able to tell them so that they'll be clear on what should be done, um, what wasn't done in the past.
I, I think that would have to be developed. I think that should also be developed with city council's input. I mean, you, you, you are the spokespersons for the community. Um, so with the community's input through the council, that action plan should be developed. And then both the city manager's office and the council can follow the performance of that action plan.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Robertson, I have a question for you in terms of the, um, before I ask my next question for the, um, about our, um, city code ordinance. So what does it currently say about the hiring or firing of the police chief?
Believe what it says is that the police chief is hired by the city manager with the approval of city council.
And what does with approval mean?
Uh, well, it just says with approval. That's, that's the word that it's used. Um, typically what has been done is the city manager makes a choice. And, um, once the hiring process is over and that choice has been made, the city manager briefs you and you indicate, um, whether or not that choice is acceptable.
You mean for the police chief position or for past positions?
Uh, well, there's, there's various positions. The charter says that, that all department heads, including police and fire chief, are under the control of the city manager. You, um, as city council have adopted, uh, local ordinances that reserve to yourselves the right to approve, um, the chief of police and, uh, a couple of other, uh, positions. And that's something that I sent you all a fair amount of information on earlier this year. I don't have the, I don't have the entire list in front of me, but, um.
And so if coun, if there was interest on council to change that, what is that process?
Well, you'd have to change the charter. So if, if you want the city council to select, um, key department heads instead of the city manager, you'd have to go, um, change the city charter.
I didn't say that council selects. Um, councillor Hill talked about at the beginning of this what the process was with the previous city manager. And what Mr. Jones told us at that time is that if those were a change or in, uh, that position, just like if it was a hiring for that position, that we, that he would discuss it with us. We were just coming on, so this was new to us, so we were just doing what we were told. So what I think, um, I'm not going to be here, so if everybody keep that in mind, um, uh, I think that this process should never occur again. And that just like with the approval of council to hire, that there should be consideration for changing that for a city manager, even though I know some of you were talked to about this, um, the city manager to have to bring that before council to fire. So I'm interested in council considering that change. And I think that anyone who we would possibly want to come here to do that would be interested in making sure that a decision made in haste with no explanation, um, and based on what they would read in, um, the papers and what that could potentially do with their reputation, that it wouldn't just be one person making that decision. All right. So councillors, that is what I would want us to look at moving forward and hopefully get some resolution on before December 31st.
That is a charter, the charter amendment?
Yeah, to change that, we talked about this before, um, this is can't come up. I think, um, if we're talking about, um, city deputy city manager positions, um, the fire chief, the, um, police chief, right now, there was questions when, um, Ms. Robertson came on, which was very different than the process we went through with, um, when Mr. Blair was hired. So I think some consistency and language and agreement, um, and for the public to hear that. Um, because even the process that we went through for hiring the city attorney was very different from what this, the intention of the process of hi, for hiring her. Um, and in some cases, it's, um, will stay out of the way, which, you know, I have my beliefs about whether that was truly honored or not. But I think in terms of employees, um, understanding how decisions will be made, and there is not one person who's not an elected official, um, that can make that decision and then offer no explanation to the public, that that is something that we need to look at. And I've said that before, and, um, people have, um, stated that they thought that I was trying to grasp too much power, where I'm not going to be here, um, in this capacity, so no power there for me. Um, so we should be able to look at this through a neutral lens about what kind of city government we want. And you're talking about a structure of government, Lloyd and I had this conversation, wherein, when it was created, um, however many members of city council, five, seven, nine, whatever it would become, have traditionally been white men who would have hired a white man, um, most of their, um, communications, uh, for those members of council would have been in agreement, probably based on, um, their class lens, and the person who they would hire would do, um, what they wanted them to do. That's why they would hire them. And if there was a agreement, disagreement there, remember this was created in Stanton, Virginia, so you can look at what's going on in Stanton today. So, um, you should know what was going on in 1900, 1906, I think it was. But, um, it may not work like that today. And especially if you have members who may not have the same diversity of thought, race or class on council, which is going to be a challenge in the future. But if you happen to get people who are not like-minded on, to make sure that everybody is included in discussion when changes like this happen, then this is a way to prevent, um, anyone being left out also. No comment?
The only, the only comment that I would make is that what you are suggesting is obviously a change from the city manager form of government that Virginia uses for virtually all of its cities. I think Richmond is the only, is the only real exception. Um, and I, I'd have to think long and hard about, A, whether that's a good idea, uh, and B, whether it would have any chance politically of getting through the general assembly. I mean, if you want to, you seem to want to comment right now, that's my comment for right now. I haven't thought about it in more detail.
Um, so I think, unless I'm wrong, um, that the board of supervisors, so Lisa, are things different for the county?
They are, yes. Counties have, um, very specifically the state law reserves to the boards of supervisors, the personnel function. That's why in the county, um, um, the board approves all the personnel regulations. Or when the city was looking at the civilian review board, that's why the Fairfax County model was different. It was because their board had the control over the personnel function, very different. That's why there's a whole, a different form of government for municipalities in Virginia. There's differences.
No, I understand that, but not every, and this has come up before. And even when we were talking about Chris Cullinan's position, um, a year or so ago, we were able, without changing any legislation, um, to say that instead of having Chris, um, Chris, that position was, I think, both supervised, um, and hired at that point before we changed it by council. That hadn't been what had been happening, but that is how it is written. So how is that different? Because we changed it for it to go under supervision of the city manager and for council, um, to be a part of a decision to remove that person, um, from their position. So how can we do that for the director of finance, but not do it for the fire chief or the police chief?
Because in the city charter, the city manager, the director of finance, and the clerk of council are the three, um, positions that you all do have, um, what they refer to as a, an employment relationship with. You control the hiring and you have the ability to supervise yourselves, and you also control the decision of whether or not to keep that person. And so what you did with the finance director is instead of managing that person yourself, you chose to delegate the responsibility for the supervision and management to the city manager, which is a little bit strange because they're both sort of co-equal. They both are supposed to report to you. Um, but the finance director, you have all of that power already yourselves. That's not the case for any of the positions other than those three.
So every city in the state of Virginia, it's only those three positions?
You have to look at what the charter says.
Um, that's what I think I'm trying to get at, so.
Yeah, there's some, there may be variations of that, but essentially, um, the, the charters that are out there, um, identify the, the key positions that the city council appoints and then reserve to the city manager the, um, the powers that are associated with what they call a chief administrative officer, which is normally, um, the person who manages all the personnel functions day-to-day.
Yes. So, what I am asking is if it is in our charter, in other cities in Virginia, charters may be different and include different people, that is a process that has occurred and it can be changed. Yes or no?
Um, yes, a charter can be changed, yes.
Alright, so that's what I'm asking council. We are right now, councillor Hill explained the process. We had our own panel, we met with the city manager, we gave feedback, um, on the individual, the entire council met with this person. And that city manager then had a very different understanding of both the police chief process and the city attorney process than is happening now. And so what I'm saying is that there was a more collaborative process with that city manager for those two positions, that nobody forced, that it was, those were how it was explained to us and those processes were driven by, um, the, um, city manager. I think this came up in a discussion, uh, that I sent an email that I sent to Mr. Jones at the time to show I wasn't in control of that process. Um, and so I'm saying it's something I think the city council, the elected officials, um, need to one, just get clarity since the interpretation has been different. Um, and decide if we can decide what type of government in twenty twenty-one, we would like to have in our city. And if we all can change processes to make them more collaborative. Um, and I'm saying all this with knowing that the same people who've been in charge primarily are gonna be back in charge of this government in twenty twenty-two. And you are probably gonna get all your questions answered, um, as people have in the past and that you probably not gonna leave people out of the discussion. I still think that there needs to be consideration for having in writing, so these type of things don't come up in the future, whereas up based on the interpretation of the city manager who isn't elected, who doesn't campaign, who can choose what to share and not share with the public when they demand answers from us. Alright, so I guess you all need to think about that too.
I did wanna know, so if the, what, and what is entailed in a charter change? Because as of right now, if the charter is saying that the city charter is saying it's, we're in charge of the clerk of council, the finance director and the city manager. If, if we discussed and moved forward at some point with opening some of that up a little bit more, what would that entail? What is the process behind that?
There's a, there's a statutory process that you have to go through. Um, I'll have to, I'll have to put some information together on that. I think Mr. Blair had briefed that for you all some time ago. Um, it's my recollection that a couple of years ago, I think councillor Bellamy was still on city council. We did a fairly extensive memo to the city council talking about a change in the form of government and that sort of thing.
But I, can I, I have another question. So the, when we did the finance director position and when it was the request put before us to change that to both supervision, um, and hiring or firing, we were not told that we had to go through this process?
You don't, because you already have all of the power for the finance director. So what you were doing was delegating some of your own responsibilities and powers to the city manager, who you also have all the power over. So you were giving up some of your power. When you were talking about some of these other processes previously, I, I mean, I, I think if you have to, you, you do have to remember some of the context in which some of the other hiring processes you're talking about were made. It was post two thousand seventeen, it was early two thousand eighteen when you were, um, um, working through a decision to end the contract with the city manager at the time. And so you were, um, there were a lot of things going on and there were a lot of reasons why you took as a council, a much more active role in various selection processes than had normally been the case over the years.
So I don't think that's true. And I sent council an email that the council at that time to Mr. Jones, um, a couple of months ago, because that is what the belief is. Um, and at the time when we came in and these processes were in place, there hadn't been a decision to let, um, that for Mr. Jones to not be with the, um, city of Charlottesville at that time. So, and you worked with Craig Brown, so you know how long Craig Brown had been here. And so this is what was the information shared to us about what that city manager thought the interpretation of the charter was. Um, and so I'm just trying to figure out the last city attorney, which I explained to council. Council and the city manager interviewed, went through applications and all of that with, um, together. They did the evaluation for the former city attorney together. And so was that illegal?
I am just saying that it's not that much involvement in the hiring process even, isn't contemplated by the charter. And if you now want to not only have the authority to be in charge of the hiring process, but also to be completely in charge of the firing process, then you have control over the entire employee. And that's not consistent with the charter provision. I'm just saying, it's not.
Did you hear me say entire process? I think what councillor Hill described, not me, and what I'm saying that you are not hearing is that there was a collaborative process. Not we were in charge, not the city manager was fully in charge, that we did it together.
So if you are talking about reviewing every single resume, that's different than participating on panels so that you can have a meaningful review of the people who are the candidates or finalists. But if you're talking about reviewing and vetting every resume that comes in, that's a different level of involvement. Um, and so over the years, people have given you some ability. So when, when you've adopted these ordinances saying we want to approve the person who's being selected by the city manager, you all have created, um, with your various city manager collaboratively, collaboratively if you wanna say, um, what those processes, what you want them to look like. I'm not pronouncing them legal or illegal, but as you start talking about, um, the level of involvement that city council has, all I'm saying is that it looks very different than the wording that's in the charter.
Okay, that's fine. But that wasn't my interpretation, that was the city manager at the time interpretation. So what I'm saying is how do we clear it up, so it's not up to my interpretation? Anyone who's gonna be on council in the future, any city manager that changed that, so people can read it and say, this is clear and this is the process.
I don't know, mayor. I guess all of you on city council are gonna have to, to, to choose an interpretation and stick with it, cuz you, you don't agree with my interpretation. Um, and so you're all gonna have to work out with the city manager what process works best for you and the community in your opinion for selecting a chief of police. Everybody seemed happy with that process the last time around, so that may be just fine. I'm certainly not declaring it illegal. Alright, any other comments?
Alright, moving on. Any other business? Nope. Alright, um, any other business or questions for the city manager to follow up? I just would like my original questions answered thoroughly. And, um, based on the op-ed and, um, interviews that councillors did, it seems like that I, we should be able to get more, me and the people in the community who care, um, should be able to get, um, clear answers, um, to those questions. Alright, matters by the public.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We've got, uh, twenty-five people in the audience. If you'd like to address council, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Each person will have up to three minutes to address council. Ange Khan, you're our first speaker, you've got three minutes. And you'll have to unmute. I'm gonna come back to Ange in just a second. We'll go next to Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with council, you've got three minutes.
Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
So y'all, I swear y'all so smart, y'all stupid sometimes. Y'all go to this charter whenever it's convenient for y'all. Convenient and beneficial. Now, Kaya did a great job explaining the charter and saying, white men in agreement based on class would hire people who would do what they wanted them to do. So let me break this down for y'all. Chip, you exactly the puppet that I thought you were when you started and I had a phone conversation with you the day you got the job. There is no way that you are slow enough to let the city bamboozle you. Who do you think is gonna come here? One firm already pulled out after Richardson's departure. The level of toxicity and the amount of turnover in this city is ridiculous. So what firm do y'all expect to come here? Any of y'all? And let's be real, Chip, you only here because the firm pulled out. They had no one. And everyone that played a part in removing Richardson didn't wanna call the man to say, hey, we don't got no more options, come back. You know why? Cuz of that nineteen forty-six charter where it says, white men in agreement, white men and white women in agreement based on class would hire people to do what they wanted them to do. So that's why you here. Good job on that, mayor. Back to this charter. Did you all read what it said about the, the city manager? Let me just briefly in my minute and some odd seconds, go over what it says about the city manager. Shall have full executive and administrative authority and shall have the right to employ and discharge all employees under his control. Handle all departments of city government, including the fire department, the police department, and should be under the general supervision or under the general supervision of the city manager. Yo, did y'all let Richardson do any of this? Cuz see, I, I can't move past that, cuz y'all bend and fold for who y'all wanna bend and fold for. It's not okay. It's not okay. And then this new process on the police chief, looking for an interim, let's go back to that. So Chip, you're gonna allow these officers that you know are on recordings talking mad smack, mad stuff, to find a new chief so they can sift through and pick who they want for their liking, so they can continue to send naked pictures on company phones, on company time, when they supposed to be doing the job? Cuz see, I don't know about y'all, but most jobs when you misuse company stuff, you can't be there. Most jobs when you're insubordinate, you can't be there. But y'all allow it there on city hall, I suppose. Is that what it is? Help me understand because, and Chip, once again, and council, why did he not get the same evaluation, Heather? Did you send it to the people that don't like Chip, like you did with Richardson? Why is this about, why hasn't he, he not been evaluated and nine people have left since February? Why? Answer it. I'll wait.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Hoffman, and then we'll try Ange Khan again. Robin, you're back on with council, you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to also sa- say a story, a short story is that the mail is being delivered in Woolen Mills at this very moment by a guy from, a postman from, um, Virginia Beach. And, uh, he's being housed in the Holiday Inn. We don't get mail here, period. Um, and so I think I've gotten two bills, which I was sorta happy about, uh, in the last three weeks. Um, and so that has to do with our, 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 uh, new election. Um, you know, we're, we're supposed to be able to vote now and we don't know who to vote for if you can't watch TV cuz you're working, you didn't see the debate, people are saying all these things about that. Uh, the absentee ballot, not being able to get a witness if you're in your own home and you can't even leave cuz of COVID and that sort of thing. So, um, I think there's a big problem and I was wondering if you knew about it and if there was gonna be something like on an agenda or something where we could talk about like, maybe even getting the military families involved with some of these bus driving and things like that. And also lastly, I just wanna say real quick, uh, Michael Payne was on my TV show and we talked about McIntyre Park, so I did some studying and that's how the Botanical Gardens changed their name. Uh, I suggested, uh, that Andrea Douglas from the Jefferson might put some statues or curate, uh, the gardens if they changed the name, and they did. And they sent me a letter and I announced that on the city council meeting one, one evening. So I just wanna say, I don't endorse a lot of nonprofits, but if I was immersed in, and I was immersed, I was volunteering for them. I saw how hard these people work and also they're very educated. Uh, they're scientists, they're, they're teachers and professors that are volunteering, okay? I just wanna endorse them very much and also C three and energy and leap. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll try Ange Khan again. Ange, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Thanks. Um, y'all, um, and I am not speaking, I, and I'm absolutely speaking to those who are benefactors in the system. Um, I'm utterly disgusted and I mean that disrespectively. Um, you continue to block, uh, vital discussions because you're ill-prepared, but you're so-called prepared to vote on matters that cater to you, um, to ca- that cater to you and your impacted communities and what you deem is important discussion. Are your neighbors patrolled? Are your loved ones being constantly harassed, abused, murdered and disappeared by the police? They're absolutely not. You absolutely do not represent any person impacted by the violence at the hands of the state and therefore should not have, um, no input or decision, decision-making power on those matters. Y'all completely know that the police institution are not reformable regardless of who's chosen to fill any position. Any attempt to re- um, add reform in the slightest manner, uh, you know what? Um, y'all should read a, a book of policing. Um, it's not, uh, going to be, uh, a matter of who is in this position. They're still upholding the foundation of the history of policing as a terrorist organization that clearly impact black and brown communities. Uh, this is the most anti-black council and y'all talk a good talk, but the decisions, how you interact with black community members, um, and their concerns and method of deflection proves this. Um, if you were smart and actually listened to the concerns of the community, you'd be look, you wouldn't be looking for, um, a police chief. You'd be looking to dismantle the institution overall and reallocate funds to community-based initiatives. From my understanding, the community who have faith in these systems are saying that they do not have faith in Chip Boiles to make decisions that would be in their best interest. And that's all I have to say on that. On another note, you do have a say in the removal of Bellamy Brown as a chair of PCRB. I would recommend that you don't take this situation lightly. Well, except for Chip, because, well, you know, their hands are in the PBA. I'll read a post from the chair because this should be on record and make sure that the public knows exactly who's sitting on the board, who is going to be a decision-making person when complaints are filed against police officers. And I quote, "Bellamy Brown. Some of these folks in Charlottesville sound like a boy who cried wolf with calling everything racism." Quote-unquote, "Oh, I dropped my ice cream." Quote-unquote, "Racism." Rowan Ice emoji. I am really concerned that this person is going to be one of the persons who, actually, on another note, I'm waiting on the numbers of those recipients of vouchers who've turned them in, as I expressed on later earlier. Yep, you're welcome.
We've got three additional hands raised at the moment. Don Gathers, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
First of all, I would like to say a huge thank you to Mayor Bobby Brown. Please continue to exercise your prerogative. Also, I would like to, to call on the entire black community of Charlottesville and really all like-minded folks to please gear up and rally around behind the police chief because it sounds like Chief Dean, I'm sorry, the fire chief, excuse me. Because it sounds like Chief Dean is next on the hit list, and folks have already put the target on his back. It is, it, it has to be glaringly obvious to folks that there are those in power, and there's a huge power base here that does not want to see black leadership and does not want to see them be successful. So it, it just seems like the, the game plan is already in place to, to target him and to have him be the next, the next victim, if you will. You all know that the, the, and I didn't think this was possible, but you all know that the CRB at this point is even more dysfunctional than through all the city council. You know what needs to be done to fix it. I urge you to do, to take those steps to fix it. I don't think that it's proper for an individual who is seated on a board to actually participate in a vote that will directly impact him or her and be either beneficial or detrimental to that individual. And that's what happened at the last CRB meeting. So I urge you all, if you have not looked at it, reviewed it, to please go back and take a look at that and take the steps that are necessary. Fix the problem, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katrina Turner, who will be followed by Joy Johnson. Katrina, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Yeah, I'm going to get back to the chief of police. And, you know, the community does need to know what happened with the chief of police. Because for the simple fact, if she was gotten rid of because of complaints against the police, what about our complaints? What about our complaints against the police? Can you go back into the police files and look at all the complaints that were filed against the police? Or can we, as citizens, compile a survey about the police officers out here? And what they're doing to the community? If you got a survey then about the police officers the way you got the survey about the chief of police, would you get rid of the officers then, the way you got rid of the chief of police? What is it going to take for you all to listen to the community about what they're going through also? What is it going to take? As I said, you all were, are supposed to be in this to help us fight this justice, but what are y'all doing? You're not doing anything to help. And Bellamy Brown? Bellamy Brown needs to be not just the chair, he needs to be off of that board. He is literally taking everything away that so many people have fought for. As I said, we have spoke on the Senate board to get the law passed where officers will be held accountable. And now that the officers are being held accountable, well, were being held accountable. And as I said, the chief of police, I feel she was done wrong by being fired for what she was fired for. Because if she finally started getting rid of those officers who are harming this community, and then you get rid of her, what is that telling this community that you don't give a, that you don't care what happens to us? So what are you going to look for in the new chief? Because we need somebody who's going to fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joy Johnson. Joy, you're on with counsel. You've got three minutes.
Yes, good evening. I have a couple of things I want to say, but I'm going to make it quick. The last city council meeting, the president of the PBA made a statement to counsel that black and brown community was not mistreated by the police department, and not one of you corrected him. Not one of you corrected him. Shame on you. Number two, Nakaya, thank you for your persistence. One of the things I learned in dismantling racism is who have power. First is white men, then it's white women, then it's black men. But black women always have to fight all three to be heard. It's not that you're not being heard. They, like you say, they have blocked you. Someone ran on council and won that they was going to bring civility back to the city of Charlottesville and to council. And it's happening. But what that says to me is, Massa is back in charge. Now, you all want to say that this is the best city? As an African-American woman, just sitting and watching, just watching, even if she is not, even if you all disagree with her, all that I can see on most of your faces, I said most, I don't want the ones who I'm not talking about to get upset, is disgust. Even down to the city attorney, is disgust because she opened her mouth. But when black women discipline white men and white women, y'all lose your damn minds. I'm sorry, this is how I'm feeling. This is very hurtful. So do not talk about ra- racism, cultural reverence and cultural competency, because none of y'all mean it. But I just want to say to the public, just remember, this is Massa country we living in. This is Thomas Jefferson country we living in. Might not like what I have to say, but that's how I feel. They bringing civility back to Charlottesville? The old dams are back in charge. We have got to get our shit together so that we can come up with a, I'm sorry, but I am just so sorry. What I see here is totally disrespectful to black people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, there are no new hands.
Okay. Any closing comments? Of course, I have two or three, but anybody else?
The only comment that I would make is that I never at any point two years ago used the word civility. I know you all think I did. I know you all think I campaigned on that. What I campaigned on was trying to work together. If that's something, if that's a dirty word, sorry. That's all I got to say.
I, I can't help but not say this. Lloyd, I had to remind you, and it's in an email, so I know you have problems with your memory sometime, that you might want to save my phone number when you got here. So you may have intended to work with somebody, but it's not me. And you know, we've had several conversations about that. So again, you know. Anyway, the first point I want to bring up before we go tonight is that Bryant Bibbs did an opinion article, much like Chip, in the Charlottesville tomorrow. It says he's a retired captain with the Charlottesville Police Department. Between 81 and 2012, had the, held the rank of patrolman detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. I was working just in 2012. I worked in a lot of places in my adult life. But at that time, I was working at Region 10, working with the drug court, family treatment court programs. We did federal and state probation and parole. And by that time, I spent a significant time personally with cousins, friends, family members in federal court mostly, because everybody seemed to make a federal case. And then by then, 202017, a set of cousins, my dad's sister's children, had been in prison since 1997, and they were a year older than me. First charge, okay? Jade, and I've shared this story a lot. But why I think this is important is, it's gone, it's part of my closing comments. But what he said is that there is, I'm trying to, yeah. I served the Charlottesville Police Department from 81 to 2012. I can't, for you all that also don't know history, the, Lloyd, you should remember very well, I'm sure, that you had a lot of clients. But when crack hit this area, and if you don't know the history of crack cocaine and how it was disseminated across from LA to the East Coast, that's probably history you need to look at. So I ran contra. You can look at Gary Webb. There's a lot of information there. But it devastated this community and did exactly what it was intended to do when it was dropped off in urban places. And so, and even though Charlottesville is a small area, it still, it devastated this community. And there are people in, you know, positions of leadership now who talk about how they barely escaped, how their families barely escaped. And I just say all that, I was one years old at the time. But I say all that to say, I knew as a child what we grew up in, in this area, because of that. So remember, freebase, crack cocaine, all of that is here by then, okay? A lot of family members spending time in state, federal prison, mostly. Lloyd, am I, anything I said incorrect? You got some feedback? Anyway, I know you'll share if you do. So he says, during his 31-year career from 81 to 2012, the positions he had, his next paragraph says, "I want to push back on the false narrative I hear represented by the current mayor." So he left y'all, so if y'all want to be included in Fair and Jess Seville, you will have to start stepping up, because right now you're not. A Charlottesville and a small group of supporters, small group of supporters, that the Charlottesville Police Department is systemically racist organization. "The mayor and others make these claims while offering no evidence or rational arguments to support them. I submit, these accusations are slanderous." Okay? That's which I have given power to. And that's what I just want to close with. There's an article that I posted on Facebook by the black police chief, male police chief in Iowa. And he talks about, in his 16-month tenure in this position, there's a quote here, stupid ad. It says, basically, "Black people have been subordinate to white people." This is, I just shared this, this is 2021 article. "When black people acquire leadership position, the power dynamic is flipped on its head, and white people who are comfortable with the status quo are now feeling very threatened." He's in Waterloo, Iowa, and his job in a town, a city of 67,000 people, with a history of racial division, is a case study for what black police chiefs face as they seek to build community trust and hold officers to a higher standard. And he thinks that it's only happening to him. I had time to reach out to him and tell him, look at what's going on here. But people will research us, like they have in the past, and they will see what is written. They will look with a neutral lens, because that's what researchers do, and see what is said and who has been consistent and who has not. And all of the families that you all are going to talk about, that you are concerned about. Because the past two weeks, the conversations that I've had with my son about the fact that he cannot stay in this community at all. You have to leave, and you should not come back. Which we've had those conversations in the past. But now with this shift, and you saw with the former president, what a shift like this does, the last one that was in there, that shouldn't have never been anybody's president. And the reclaim of power, what it looks like. And people have often asked, how do, how do we have this conversation at 1619, 1760, 1898, 1960, 2017, and now today? It's not because people marched down streets with tiki torches and talk about you won't reclaim us. It's because the people who don't do this overtly, how they will their power. And if you all have not studied history and looked at that, so you all make one decision, and that decision is going to follow every one of you, especially you, Chip, who I reached out to based on my observations of you at the PDC and asked you if you could come here and help John Blair, thinking that the neutral lens, I thought I saw you look through, that that is what you would bring through this city. That is not what has happened. This is not the first time you've heard that from me, and I've shared with you quite a few times what I thought about how things were going, even before this situation. But I knew by then that if you would make the decision to be different, what the current candidates were raising, the platforms that they were running on, and what the last election cycle looked like, that this was not a community that was committed to the reforms that it said, that it was committed to in 2017. And what I want you all to understand is that you don't have to have the conversation, well, three of you, because one don't have any kids, with your kids that I've had to have with mine their entire lives, growing up in this community, trying to survive it, and that now I have to have because you all have put cops in place in positions of power where they can control and dictate even who is here and what they do. And that you've given a platform not to reform and not to changing policing in this community, but you've given a platform to people who don't want those changes to take place. And that you all have the audacity to sit And that you all have the audacity to sit here and act like it was something else. So yes, the personalities, and yes, the chief came in a room and claimed her space, which you all would not question any white man for doing. I get those questions every day, like, how dare you, black girl, have the nerve to come in a room and take up space the way you do? And I hope more people have learned to take up space in that way. But not only take up space to organize and build the way we need to build to protect ourselves because it's clear that since you all are not a target, since you all don't walk around with a bullseye on your head, and your kids don't walk around with it on their chest, that you all can't even link what systemic racism looks like and be concerned about the people who are most impacted by it. You all should be ashamed, and I would not spend any time running or serving in office to sit amongst people who think that this type of behavior is okay, that don't understand that the lives of my family members, my friends, kids who are in my body, you just put on a line by empowering racist cops to make decisions in this police department. Any other comments? Me and the adjourned, have a good night.